Good evening. My name is Eric Lindstrom. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. Today is September 25th and the time is 7:04 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
In the United States of America, in the republic which is sanctified, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the justice for all.
I'll take a roll call. The members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lindstrom here, chairman. Ryan Kelly, vice chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, professional engineer, he is not here. Benjamin Sabia, secretary.
Here.
Paul Fernandez.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Chair.
And Andrew Brahman, inland wetland enforcement officer.
Yes.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetland Mission Statement, the objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. The meeting procedure, please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of the body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meeting, we will hear public hearings and other applications. Protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. Meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise admitted. Are there any changes to the agenda?
What changes to the agenda?
First on the list, general public participation. Is there anybody in chambers that would like to speak in a general nature about something this evening on our agenda? Anyone online? Okay, moving on to regulated activities. None there. Moving on to public hearings. IWC 2024-04, file number 1480, 1536, and 1564 Monroe Turnpike. Proposed eight lot, single-family residential development and a new road crossing a wetland adjacent to wetlands and watercourses. Jan's Land Development LLC, the applicant. Jay Edwards Associate LLC Representative, continued from our 9/11 meeting.
There is what?
What do you need?
That password is for the public.
Sorry, chairman.
You need a couple minutes to get situated?
Do you want to switch it?
Agenda just.
Drive first.
Is it okay with that?
Can we vote on it just for good pleasure?
We have a motion to here IWC 2024-07 prior to.
Did you make that motion?
In seconds?
I'll second that motion.
Second. Now we need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay.
We should confirm it's the other.
It's James.
It's James. Very easily do that quick switch. James, are you okay with us moving on to the next one? IWC 2024-07, file number 1488, Todd Drive. Proposal to replace Todd Drive culvert, town of Monroe is the applicant owner, Thai and bond representative.
Yep, I'm ready if you are.
Let's do it.
Kathleen, you be able to give me host privileges or share?
Yes.
We need to read this into the record first though, right?
Yes, while we figure that out, yes.
Let's go and read that into the record. Alrighty, this is for IWC 2024-07, 1488 Todd Drive. In accordance with CGS Section 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, September 25th, 2024 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom. This is proposal to replace Todd Drive culvert, town of Monroe applicant and Thai and bond representative.
We've only done this once in practice. I just have to remember how to make James a co. Make those beautiful.
Yep.
Alright, that should be good. Beautiful.
Okay, so. Okay.
Yep.
So, good evening, everybody. Again, James DeMata, town engineer for Monroe. We are looking to replace some existing culvert pipes along Todd Drive.
We lose them?
James, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you.
Broke the internet.
Well, this is just going to be the night for technical difficulties.
I'll wait and just come up, which means it's going to reconnect.
You're back in the world.
We can see you, we can hear you.
James, do you want to turn off your video so that you're not using additional bandwidth and maybe that'll?
Yeah, we'll try that.
Alright, great.
What happened there? Okay, so, start over again. James DeMata, town engineer, Monroe. Todd Drive, we have Harvey Pete Brook going or crossing Todd Drive where there's some existing culvert pipes, some, a 36 inch corrugated metal pipe, a 30 inch RCP, and a 24 inch RCP. And beyond that, there's four residential houses. And this is, the pipes have been failing for some time now, so we, we've been kind of band-aiding it until we've been able to get this design going. And actually, we, we did a road repaving and we stopped, we had to stop earlier. Actually, you can kind of actually see where we stopped in the aerial. We had to stop before the culvert, so, but this road is in disrepair, but we've been waiting for this. So what we are proposing, or to give you a little bit of a better idea. We had the wetlands flagged in 2020, which is when this whole process started by Davidson and then Chevlin put it on their survey, so we can see where the wetlands are. But essentially, we, yeah, we just have the, the three pipes, 36 inch, 30, and the 24 runs right through the, the two catch basins in the road. What we are proposing to do, and this has taken some coordination with the property owners as well. We are planning on installing a box culvert. And we're extending the box culvert due to some alignment issues that we have in, in the brook. Because right now, what's happening is we are experiencing also some erosion along the bank because the water's coming down on the southeast angle, hitting the bank and eroding that bank and trying to undermine our head wall on that edge as well. So what we want to do is we want to extend and angle the box so that we intercept it, you know, at the same angle that it's flowing naturally. Aside from that, it's maintaining in the same location. The outlet, we are actually pulling back just, just a little bit, but more or less in the same place. We have some trees that are going to need to come down mainly on the northern end. Some of these trees are actually dead already, but they'll need to come down just due to grading. Aside from that, basically, that's the, the down and dirty of what we're trying to do. We're maintaining flows. It will be a four-sided box culvert with 12 inch stream bed material on the bottom. It's a relatively flat culvert with low consistent flows.
I'm sure Zoom can't hear.
You can't hear that?
I can hear it, but somebody on Zoom cannot hear it.
I was suggesting look at their volume level. I will tell you that we had IT come in and double check every single microphone, both in chambers here for the audience as well as they tested it at Zoom at multiple people's computers. So I would suggest to them if they, if they're able to turn their volume up, to be able to hear it on their personal computers. But IT did come in and do a full sweep to make sure that all the sound was functioning properly.
Yeah, I will also try to talk a little bit closer to my microphone.
We hear you very.
So essentially, that's, that's the bulk of, of the project. Yeah, it's a relatively flat box, you know, low pitch, you know, one, just over one and a half percent. So the hope is that, you know, again, the, the stream bed material should, should stay. It has a pretty consistent low flow all year round. And and yeah, I mean, that's pretty much the bulk of it. There will be some easements and some other things that are needed to be attained from the property owners, but that'll be dealt with once we get wetlands approval. I will say we do have a, oh, I will go over this real fast. Our bypass plan, so right now, we're trying to keep all or most of our disturbances on two properties, 15 Todd Drive and 16 Todd Drive. That's where most of our grading is and that's where our bypass is going to be. So they're taking the brunt of it. Now, what we're doing is we're going to be planting some additional or extra material in terms of plants and trees and vegetation back. Andrew and I went, sat down and we kind of went over some, some plants. And we were going to let the property owners dictate. Basically, I'm going to give them a budget and I'm going to allow them to, they have to pick plants and they can infill to make their properties look as aesthetic and give as much screening as they see fit. Is the intention. But a lot of the final.
How long do you think this project's going to take to, from start to finish?
From start to finish, hopefully, three months or less than three months. It, it kind of poses a logistical nightmare because we have to maintain access for these four residents at all times. So we can't just pull the entire thing down and close down this section of road. So we have to always maintain one lane. So for instance, we're going to start with the northern end. We're going to maintain that lane there and then we're going to pull out everything on the downstream side. And then we're going to have to flip-flop the other way and do the other half. And that's why the bypass needs to be put in because it's, it's going to need to be able to handle the flows for extended periods of time.
Alright.
How long, how long will that bypass be in place then? All the, the three months or?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be the, the full three months until the entire boxes. Oops, sorry, until the entire box culvert is, is installed. It's going to have to be. It's, it's literally going to be one of the last things to come out.
Start, any more questions?
Is there a target start date for this?
Start date, Tim?
There, unfortunately, there is not one. Because after I get approval, I still have to secure some funding. And I'm trying to be able to utilize grants as much as I can, especially for a lot of these town culvert projects. But, you know, right now, this plan has actually been in the works since before I started, so for over a year and a half, two years. So I want to get across the finish line, at least with local approvals, get all the residents on boards, easements. And as soon as I'm able to find funding, whether it comes from the capital budget or what have you, I want to get this done ASAP because it is a continuing, a continual problem and maintenance nightmare for us right now because there's constant, constant erosion and we need to stop it.
Once you get everything put into place that you need to move forward, how do you plan on letting everybody know in the specific area and the rest of public? What's your plan to make that announcement and how far in advance will you give people notice?
So I have specific contact information for, for all of the affected properties. And I've already been in contact with them. I've met, I've sat down with them already, talked to them about the whole process. And, and we've been staying in constant communication. So there's still a few more interactions that I need to have with them even before we can put a shovel in the ground. So they're going to be kept very well in the loop. They have to be, is the simple answer. I'm going to be on them because again, they need to understand when they're going to be inconvenienced, how it's going to inconvenience them at what points. For instance, I know one of the property owners, they work night shift instead of day, so they, they tend to sleep during the day. Well, we're going to have some, some rocks that we're going to have to hammer out specifically, you know, there's ledge here, which is right where the bypass is going and everywhere else. So I have to coordinate with them a lot. And there's going to be a lot of coordination with all these property owners moving forward.
You guys have any other questions?
Jimmy, you mentioned giving the residents an opportunity to make plant selection for filling in and providing a visual barrier. Is it, is it possible and within reason to make sure that those plants that are, that they're given the option to consider are native plants?
Yeah, so, so Andrew and I went through the list and, and we felt that this was a good selection and that they fit in the area. So, so basically, they'll have their pick of the approved list.
And Andrew, can you confirm that they're all native?
Yeah, so we put together the list for two purposes, one to be native and another to be aesthetic. Alright, and we put that list together with that in mind and now they can choose from that list.
That is okay.
So anything they choose there, we can be confident that it's native.
Yeah, right.
Okay, can I, any questions?
No, I'm good with that. No questions.
No questions. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Any, any question from?
Open up to the public, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to say. Any, anybody from the public in the chambers who wants to come up and make a comment? Favor or against us?
I'd just like to speak in favor.
Come on up and speak into the microphone, please.
State your name and there's a sign-up sheet. Would you put your name on that sign-up sheet?
My name is Bob Transillo. I live at 33 Pamela Drive, been in town since 66. And this is an important project because over those years, we've had a number of culverts blown out a number of times. And I, I believe this really should be taken care of as soon as possible. 1980, four years ago, they paved the roads, they paved Pamela and they paved part of Todd. They said they couldn't go on further because they had to do the culvert. And I believe we were all kind of led to believe that it was going to be done shortly. The road is really bad, that part of Todd. I was just, I just drove by it tonight. It's very rough. But it's an important, I think the most important thing is to duly culvert do it properly. Because we've had a number of problems over since 1966.
Thank you.
And can I have your name again?
Bob Transillo.
Any residents from Todd Drive?
No, I live on Pamela.
I'm on 215 Todd Drive, so we're like the.
Come on down, please.
This is the first time I've ever attended one of these meetings, so I have no clue what I'm doing and no clue what I'm saying.
Just get your address.
And I'm Brian Ripko, 15 Todd Drive.
So we have met with James a while back. He was pretty helpful. We are also pushing for this. My concern was that the road is in really bad shape. That whole thing is in really bad shape. It's in disarray. And then from a selfish standpoint, we do have a huge rock with a bunch of plants that we didn't only move there two years ago and spent a good amount of money in on that area. That sounds like it's going to be completely demolished to put this culvert in. So that was one of my concerns to make sure that we are having plantings put back to make it look somewhat normal once that's done because it's kind of like a front focal point for our area.
Were you satisfied with their plan to give you guys an opportunity to?
Yeah, James, it's been good. And maybe that was just more of us wanting to get this pushed forward as fast as possible because really that bridge is, if there's constant holes that you guys patch it up or it's just, it's rough. It's, it's not only aesthetic issue, but again, like you said, it's, it's more of a concern than anything else because houses across the street have flooded multiple times over the rainy season that we've had. We've had some wetlands. We've had a tree that's fallen onto our property and now partially onto our house. Whether that's because the ground is sinking in because of the wetlands, due to the backing up of the flooding, that potentially could be it. You know, we're just, at this point, we want to get it moved as fast as possible because we've been there for two years and it's, we've noticed that it's gotten patched but not fixed and it's getting worse and worse.
Was that you before who made that comment about?
Well, when we started, yeah.
One was starting, okay. Just want to make sure we know who.
Yeah, that was me.
So I would just point out that with regard to your landscaping, anytime you do plantings or any, anything in the upper review area of wetlands, please get in touch with us. Make sure you don't need a permit because we're not, we, we can't cover, if you've done something and spent a lot of money, then there could be a problem with it. And we just want, we don't want that to happen. Okay, we want you to have good landscaping. But we want to make sure that we're noting what's happening in the wetlands and the upper review area.
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this isn't a yard. This isn't like anywhere near that, but they said they have to take that out in order to do anything. And that was always a landscaped area before we got there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mind just signing of a?
Thank you.
Anybody else in the chambers who wants to come up and speak? Anyone online who wants to? Anyone? Okay, guess that's.
Make a motion to move the application to, to close the public hearing and move the application to deliberation.
Second. Second, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Adamus?
You voting on this, Jerry Rickert, you?
We will be deliberating.
Yeah, we will be deliberating.
Alright, moving on to, or moving back to IWC 2024-04, file number 1480, 1536, and 1564 Monroe Turnpike. Proposed eight lot, single-family residential development and new road crossing a wetland adjacent to wetlands and watercourses. Jan's Land Development LLC applicant. Jay Edwards Associates LLC representative. This is continued from 9/11/24 and 15 minutes ago.
Chair of members of the commission, Chris Russo, from IWC, Texasville Hill Road in Fairfield. Here, we have the applicant. Thank you for the accommodation, never until moment. We are here. We've obviously been before you a number of times and you know, there were some outstanding issues to address. The main being around the conservation easement and then the proposed crossing of the wetlands. As you may recall, we, we shifted the road in such a way to minimize the disturbance of the wetlands as much as possible, getting it down to 1,100 square feet. But there was questions regarding the culvert. I'll let Jason get into that, but I just first wanted to start off. We did submit a, a draft of a conservation easement. I don't know if you received the copy of it, just to, but it's.
I have it here.
Submitted it to staff. I'll, I'll let you know, this conservation easement, the draft conservation easement is one actually, it's one of the first things I worked on as an attorney. When I first started, the Deer Meadow Estate subdivision, which oddly enough was the same applicant that you have tonight, was doing subdivisions now White Tail Drive. And that subdivision had a number of easements associated with it. There was a conservation easement, there was a drainage easement, there was a sightline easement, there was a slow easement. There was a fire pond easement. It was basically every easement under the sun. And so when we did that back in 2014, went, worked with the town attorney, town staff at the time, the town engineer, and we really came up with a series of easement agreements that have been template. I use them now in all the towns I work in. I think Jason used it on 1271 Monroe Turnpike. It's, it's kind of been the standard. It's, it's a pretty streamlined, it's, it's a concise but clear document. And I'll just read a portion of it. What it would do would grant and convey in this, in this instance, to the town perpetual conservation easement on that, that area of land and Jason's going to point that area out. And it's in perpetuity. This version that we used for for Deer Meadow prevented from constructing trails, building structures or other improvements within said conservation easement area. There wasn't the potential for trails really in that area. They're maybe here, I don't know. But, and it also prevented in any way disturbing the natural condition of land they're in except as shown on the submitted clearance. And it required that, it said that it shall not be amended or abandoned without the written consent of the town of Monroe and the prior approval of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Those were created through the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that could be amended to also include inland wetlands. It just made sure you're not changing this unless the town and unless the commissions are purportively assigned. The other thing it did was it had a section where it said that any instrument conveying the premises affected by the easement agreement and any lease or mortgage had to contain language referencing this easement. So not only would it, it carries from property owner to property owner, but it also made sure in the most likely case, a mortgage, that when you, when you would get a mortgage on a property, it would show there as well. So there wouldn't be an instance where it would be left off, you know, just to kind of be thorough and make sure of that. And then the other thing was, you know, I mentioned this, but it was binding on air successors and signs. It's in perpetuity. You could transfer it 10,000 times. It would still be there. We will be long gone on that. transfer it 10,000 times, it would still be there. We will be long gone and that easement will still be there. So I submitted that draft for you to have. And again, this is something that since 2014, these lease, these easements have been kind of standard bearer. I use them everywhere. And so, with regard to conservation easement area, this map shows, Jason, you want to go? These areas that were now proposing for conservation.
For the record, Jason Edwards, Jay Edwards Associates, engineer surveyors, at 227 Stephanie Road in Easton. Everybody hear me okay? So this is the same map that was submitted a week or a little more than a week ago. And what we've proposed is the open space on the south end of the property still, total of about 13 acres, 12.9 acres. And then, over top of the open space, we're proposing a conservation easement over the wetland area, the fingered wetland areas. That was my interpretation of what the third-party reviewer, Dr. Clemens, had, had really wanted to preserve. So we took that and we went over the, basically, these fingers of wetlands with a conservation easement. But to be honest with you, I've never seen a conservation easement over town open space before. And I don't think there's any reason it can't be done. But it is not something I've ever seen before, not in this one. So just to put that out there. So you've got the area of open space here, which is based on what the applicant told me. There is some trails and things up here. I don't know, you know, if you were to put a conservation easement over this whole hillside, does that limit the use of those trails if the neighbors already use them? Are you going to discontinue that use? Yeah, I believe the third-party reviewer issued a letter yesterday stating that he would like to see the whole steep hillside part of the conservation easement. I don't fully understand that. I answer his personal opinion. I understand what he's saying. But saying that's not even a 100-foot review area, it's not a wetland area. It just seems like it's, it's a big ask to take the use of the property from not only the neighbors, I guess, but the town too. If P&amp;Z decides that they want to do, have active open space or something, they should have the right to do that, I think. But, but that's not my decision. You know, I think if the commission wants that all under conservation easement, I think we'd probably be okay with it. I just don't personally, I don't know if the applicant told you, agrees with that need for it. So that, you know, it also is a piece of conservation easement down over here as well, next to the wetlands. That's kind of the extent of the easement. The other issue that was sort of left open a few weeks back was the cross culvert, the road. So we worked with town engineer to come up with something that is acceptable to, sorry to page you, was acceptable to him. And that we feel is the best solution. This is the detail sheet. It's D4, the plans. This here's the, sort of specific dimensions of the box culvert with a nice geometric diagram. What we propose is we are, last time, we had the bottom of the culvert sunk down about six inches below the existing grade. We dropped that a quarter of a foot. So we're now down about 18 inches below. And then we're going to fill on top of that and with riprap. And in the bays along the bottom of this culvert are going to be baffles. So the stones are placed within the baffles so that they are held in place. So there's a six-inch or a foot baffle that sticks up. We fill that in with stone. The stone then can't move out of that cavity that we create there. And then there is a path that goes through that's called a fish channel, a fish ladder. So you do have the path with water hop line. And the idea is over time, that's going to fill in the sediment over top of the riprap. So you're going to get a real natural stream bed on top of that. And I think that's a good solution to the problem that was raised. So there's, we're going to answer specifics on that. We did also have some final comments, or hopefully final comments from the town engineer on the drainage calculations and other various technical engineering comments. We've gone back and forth with him verbally over the last couple of days to get those all ironed out. I'm comfortable. He's on. I think he could answer if he's comfortable. But I think that we are good with everything. We can address all of his comments without any changes that would necessitate an impact, difference, any changes to the wetland effect. Anything that we have to change is going to be either minor and not anywhere within the review area, or, you know, far on the other side of the site. It's related to the heights of the drainage basin burns and pipe inverts, that kind of thing. And James can chime in on that if he wants to. But I feel that we're in a good place. We'd be comfortable. You know, he's also going to be getting some P&amp;Ps, assuming it will be approved. So he'd have a chance to get those addressed at that time.
I think that, well, I, there's just a couple of things I'd like to have Jason say. The first is regarding this open space conservation easement. You know, the way, what this project is coming under from a zoning regulation point of view is what's known as a cluster subdivision. And there's some language that's being added because it's not necessarily fleshed out as it should be in the regulations. But what's before the, what planning and zoning is looking at is that this cluster subdivision is something utilized for large properties that were 15 acres. The thought behind it, similar to what's known as the Recreation Residence District in town, there's a number of those around, is that instead of having a subdivision, traditional subdivision, where you splay out across the entire property, you are allowed to shrink the size of the lots and locate it out of areas that are desirable, one for staying away from wetlands, but also for open space. So the requirement that's, that they're looking at right now is for 34% of a subdivision lot to be preserved as open space. And 10% of that, actually, they get to determine will get conveyed, will actually get conveyed to the town. It won't just have an easement over it, it will get conveyed to the town. And, you know, I don't want to speak for the commission, but I know that what I've heard expressed someone's thought is that, is that one, you're trying to, you know, maintain this area, maintain the natural area, but that you would also create an area that possibly could be used by Monroe residents, whether it's, you know, specifically within that 10% area, you know, for something like hiking trails. So, you know, what we tried to do was propose a conservation easement where you wouldn't, you definitely wouldn't want that over the wetlands. It's a substantial area. I think it's 10 acres at least. I mean, it's a substantial area that we're covering in this conservation easement, but then leaving the rest for what would be the determination, I guess, of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is, you know, whether that would be used actively or whether it would be used tacitly. And then with regard to the culvert and what we're proposing, I just want to point out that, you know, one of the things we try to look at with inland-wetlands applications is are there, what's a feasible and prudent alternative? And is this the most feasible and prudent alternative? And one, one case that, you know, I as an attorney and most attorneys look at, it's kind of like the standard bearer case is Sam Perry versus the Inland Wetlands Agency in West Haven. It's a case that's back in 93 that actually involved road crossings. And the court mightn't really discuss about what feasible is. And feasible related to engineering, that's what, is it sound from an engineering point of view? And I think what we've done here is we've worked with the town engineer to come up with a engineering design that's feasible, that works obviously for the development itself, but also works for the town. And, you know, I'm thankful to James for all his feedback and Dr. Clemens as well, that I think has helped us improve this design over these weeks and these number of hearings that we've had, to get something that's sound engineering-wise, but also tries to show as much consideration as we can for the wetlands and some of the species that are around here. So, with that, I think that's it. We'd be happy to answer any questions, obviously.
We'll get to the public first. We've got questions around. Go ahead, if you would.
When you came up with the new ideas, did you consult the construction program guide from the Federal Highway Administration? Did you perhaps take a look at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Culvert Design Guidelines for Ecological Function?
The applicant did. The applicant's, you know, I have to say, I've been representing him since I started as an attorney and my office has represented for decades. He is known as one of the premier road builders in the area. He's done countless subdivisions in this town and around. And he's well experienced with road. It's probably, I would say, it's probably what he's supposed to hope for, and he's doing stuff like this.
So, but you didn't, you did, you did consult the U.S. Fish and Wildlife recommendations?
I did not consult that. Actually, Mike Chisnowsky.
Come up and?
You gotta come up and say your address.
At the last hearing, there was a big thing about this box culvert.
Can you just state your name?
Mike Chisnowsky, Janz Land Development.
Turn the microphone towards you.
9 Way Tail Drive, Monroe. Yeah, so at the last hearing, box culvert was an issue. And actually, I went home and I started searching. What is a prudent, you know, situation to make this happen? And I found it in, you know, many states out west where it was trout runs, salmon runs or whatever. And I'm seeing, I just, all of a sudden, I just went in that, what about baffle box culverts? Oh, and it came up. And the way they did it, which we are creating the same effect, is the box culvert is not just, you know, raised concrete baffles inside. They're staggered. Okay? So there's like here, 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 here. And with the help with Jason and the engineers, we improved that to have one level higher than the other, and then staggered it like that. So which, what happens is, and I don't know if Salamanders want to go through it or fish, I don't think fish will be going through that up there. But they created this for the U.S., you know. Trying to say they, their design, okay? And so anyway, we created this and the water will flow through it and wrap around it and actually oxygenate the water as well. And if there's fish, they'll go through it. There are salamanders that will go through it. And that's the way we came up with it.
Yeah, and if I could also, so we all, as part of that, we also had Matt Pop, who should be on. Matt, if you're there, he reviewed the design. You can speak on it. Can't see if he's on. Matt, are you there?
I am here. Good evening. I'm Matthew Pop, landscape architect, professional wetland scientist. I think the one thing about the culvert is we just want to make sure that there's no lip, you know, on the downhill side. That if salamanders crawling up from the downhill side, that they get caught on the lip. I think the solution with the baffles is good because we'll keep the stones in place. But again, the main thing is, I think, no lip on the downhill side. And I think, you know, Mike has a method of, you know, ensuring that there's no lip. Mike, maybe you want to go into that a little bit?
So, the entrance into the baffle, a box culvert, we're going to use the flat rocks with filling in cement on the joints even or just a little bit above the bottom of the box culvert. And out for several feet, which any little printer like that will be, it won't get caught up in the lip, as well as on the downhill side. Is that right, Matt?
Yeah, again, just no lip on the downhill side.
Right. So we're going to pave, we're going to pave around the flat rocks.
And what did you determine was the ban full width of this culvert?
Sorry?
What did you determine is the ban full width?
The W100.
The W100. Do you know what the ban full width is?
Not sure what you're referring to.
Okay. So, again, I refer, I'm not making this stuff up. The Federal Highway, Federal Highway Administration, as well as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they're very specific about what and how it comes about, that we allow wildlife and ecological function to happen in a culvert. The, what I have in front of me with the stepped baffle, I really appreciate that you're putting in fish ladders and stepped baffles. And flat rocks sound good, but what they recommend is a low-flow channel in the middle and geomorphic, geomorphic channel around it to the W100 width, which is the 100-year flood stage. That's the width of the.
It was designed for 100 years of storm.
So what is the width here of the C6 seat?
It's going to be slightly larger than that, based on our discussions with the engineer today. It'll be 78 inches wide. And we do have a fish channel and a path down the middle, as you just said. This is a design that's, comes from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation as well. We based this up there.
And maybe for a very specific ecological environment where there are fish that are being used in different, larger mammals. But we're talking some small amphibians. And I honestly, and I would agree with Dr. Clemens, that this is a novel engineering feature. You may have, you may have taken it from another project, but that project is not necessarily the same.
This road is intermittent most of the time. Okay? It's not going to have flow, you know, several hundred gallons a minute going through there like trout streams.
Right.
And, you know, so we're dealing with, you know, more of a different species. And I think, you know, Matt Pop and the engineers have done a great job with following this program. I like it. I think it's the answer to the situation to, you know, allow the, you know, smaller printers going through it.
Charles? You know?
I don't disagree with you and I probably, but the people who know are people like Dr. Clemens.
Yeah.
He knows what, and so I am agreeing with him. And I don't have any biological data that supports your stepped baffles and the situations.
If you recall, we're somewhat limited by what we can choose for our options here. Because the town engineer will not allow us to do a span. He will only allow a four-sided with a bottom box culvert. So we had to work within that box, literally. So, you know, otherwise we have something that will not be approved beyond here. So we can't propose something that we know is not going to be approved by the next step of the process. You know, it took a lot of the options off the table for us. So we are limited to a box culvert.
Well, and again, that's, again, what I think speaks to feasible, you know, which is charged. This is a feasible prudent alternative. And are there alternatives? Yes. But what's before this commission, is this, is this a feasible and prudent alternative? And I think it is. Especially, especially by the, you know, the town engineer reviewed it and was satisfied with it. Whereas you wouldn't be with the other.
So then my last question is with regard to, can you just please go through the culvert section and tell me about the upstream and downstream areas leading in there with regard to the grade of the, I see here the closed box section, but I'm not, it's not really clear what grade we've got there. What?
This is your, this is the section of the culvert here. I think we have one that's got the actual percentage on here. I want to say it's an 11% grade across the bottom of it. of it. I can give that exact number for you, but it's approximately that. There's a detail, construction detail on that on one of these sheets getting.
That's why the baffle, so.
Right. And then the area upstream and downstream immediately, because if it, if there's a real dip and then it goes to 11%, that's different than if it's very, very flat or, you know, I don't know if the upstream.
We're matching the intent is to match the grades coming in and out. So we're just, we're basically following the existing rate coming into it and out of it. Really have to, otherwise you'll have a scour problem.
Yeah.
And inside the culvert, there's gonna be pepper rock.
Right.
And, you know, throughout. So with the baffles, even, what'd you say, 100 years old, yeah, the baffles will retain the rock that's inside.
Even with 11%, I, you haven't quoted me the real grade, but the, even at 11%, that is a significant slope. And that water's gonna be moving through there.
Just as I think, maybe that's the same slope that it is today.
Yeah.
Natural.
Same slope.
Natural. Within the culvert, it should be, I was hoping that it was less of a, of a grade.
We, I mean, we just, like you just said, though, you can't do that because you have to match the grades in and out or you're gonna disrupt the.
As you say, you need to match them. I said, you need to be cognizant of the upper and lower for what that does to the speed of the water going through there.
Yeah. We have to maintain the same flow that we have. Otherwise, we create a pond or we create a pond either side. So, you know, we're matching the natural flow of the channel as best we can.
Mr. Chisnouski, I'm not, I'm not questioning your ability to do this. I'm just trying to get the best practices in the United States for ecological function here. This is, that's the key thing here. Not the, not the time that it's gonna take to disturb it. We want that to be short. Yes, of course. But most importantly, we want it to work and we want it to work for a long time. And we don't want it to have any effect on, on, on the ecological function of the area.
That's why the town engineer wanted a four sided box culvert. So last but long gone.
I understand from a maintenance viewpoint, that is, that's his position. But I also have to understand from an engineering viewpoint that we can put substantial mass of this culvert to make sure that we don't undermine any of the sides of it. And if you use the true ban full width, you really shouldn't have a problem.
Commissioner, one of my, one of my concerns is, is that, you know, we're, when we come and apply to you, we are, we are trying to minimize as much as possible our impact to the wetlands. That's our main thing. We are trying to, because that's the main thing before this commission. And, and that's what we are trying to do. If we do something like change grades, we could then endanger the wetlands, which, which we're going against the main thing there. And look, we are happy to try to do these things and make these changes to also make sure we don't impact the wildlife that's around there. The, so I haven't even got, I mean, the truth of the matter is, is the eastern box turtle, the salamanders, those things aren't under the purview of the Wetlands Agency. Courts ruled on it. There's a case in Avalon Bay Communities where they've talked about that fact, that it's not what, what for wildlife purposes, what before the commission is, does the wildlife impact the physical characteristics of the wetland? It's a very narrow thing. And so I don't want to move away from what is before this commission, which is making sure we preserve this wetland for, you know, we're trying to accommodate. We have a box turtle plan, even though, again, it's, the courts ruled, it's not something that's under review of the agency. My client has no problem with it. He's an outdoorsman. We want to try to see what we can do. We put it in there. We haven't argued about it at all. Same thing with this. We tried to tackle this to try to make it the best as possible. But if it's something like, all right, we're gonna change a grade there. And then my understanding is that can have negative impacts on the wetlands. I, you know, that, that concerns me to move in that direction.
Yes, Mr. Russo. I'm not, I'm not a hydrologist. I'm not a mechanical engineer. I am an engineer, but I'm not, I'm not specialized in culvert design. I'm just trying to rely on the people who know what they're doing, have a lot of data that drives them and, and put out guidelines for culvert design. And, and I just, I'm just saying that, you know, from my viewpoint, 11% is quite a, and, and, you know, I don't know. I can't, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't.
Do you have a very specific concern that you'd like to address? Because it sounds like you have a lot of information that you're conveying, but I'm not sure you're giving them a direct, so.
I was just trying to understand that whether they were using guidelines themselves, whether this was indeed a novel engineering solution that they came up with and.
It sounds to me like it is. I'll, let's, let's ask James real quick if, if he has any comments.
Matt, if you have one, it's waiting on you as well. Because you're, you know, you're asking, you know, if there was an expert that could speak to that. And I don't know, Matt, if you've listened to the conversation, if you've had something to add on, on changing the 11%.
Well, again, the only way you could change 11% is if you lower the, the upgrade area, lower that area. But then you may be de-watering the wetland. And then if you raise the outlet to downstream side, you know, then you end up with the possibility of having, you know, a lip eventually, or steeper for, you know, salamanders to walk up to, there, I would say call it a ramp to the culvert. Again, we're trying to maintain the same grade. When you're out there, it's steep. You know, right now, it's steep, right where that is. And the uphill side's not as steep, but the downhill side definitely is.
Which is why I was, I was concerned with the ban full width. You can, you know, go forward with it. I do have some comments on open space, but we'll talk about that later, I guess. I don't know. I just want to talk about it now.
No, let's, let's keep going. So let's move on. Do you have any questions about the specific area?
You guys mentioned, I believe, before this culvert design, who, where it originated from, Pennsylvania, Department of Pennsylvania?
Yes, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. They have a standard design that we modeled this after. No modifications, but basically the same.
Okay. So I'm curious, because I do, I have the same letter from Dr. Clemens that, that Commissioner Smith was referring to. And it seems to me, as it relates to this, that his biggest concern is that there are not case studies and reports of this system working. However, I'm curious if that is definitively the case. Has it been implemented in other, other projects? And have, have there been studies on the results, the positive results of, of that implementation?
I mean, there's definitely been implementation and there are studies, most of them on the movement of aquatic fish through them. As far as the movement of salamanders through them, I could not find anything. But they function well. They're standard, as I said, in Pennsylvania, as well as other states use them too. There's, if you do a Google search, there's, you know, quite a few results that come up to look. There was nothing I could find that was specific to the ecology of this site related to the box culvert.
And I said a foot more ecology. I didn't, it's not, not just the wildlife. It's the way that the system operates. We're concerned with the groundwater and the effects it has to the groundwater as it, as it affects the residents. So our purview is not just, oh, we want to save certain animals. That's not the case. We want to serve, we want to protect the ecosystem, which is much bigger than just some salamanders getting through.
And I mean, I think this application, if you recall, we started with one more lot. We reduced that lot. We adjusted the crossing. We redesigned the whole road. We'd now be the conservation easement. So we redesigned the culvert. You know, we've given a lot for a very small, in my opinion, small, you know, square footage and impact area of this wetland crossing. We've reduced it significantly. I just have both the commission, the numbers all that we've been through to get to this point. Been quite a bit. Thanks.
So really for me, I'm just curious, I believe Dr. Clemens is here, and I don't know if we want to just run down on questions, but I'm just curious, in his notes, the heavy push for the idea of the entire open space area being a part of the easement. And I'm curious, when public comment opens up, if any, anybody in the area has any opinions about that space in the back that's not part of the wetlands, and if they think that it should be into the easement, or if they think it should not be. And I think perhaps there's some conflict in, in position that would be interesting to hear about there. I'm curious about Dr. Clemens, though, and his, his position on this. I'm okay waiting, if we want to wait.
Well, I've had my hand up for the last half hour.
Okay.
Are you of any interest in hearing?
Go ahead, Dr. Clemens. Go ahead.
Yeah, we can hear you, Dr. Clemens.
First, I've got to tell you, I'm Michael Clemens. I'm the third party consultant for the Town of Monroe. It's been very difficult to follow this because although you said at the beginning, everyone should announce who they are, no one is doing that. So I've been trying to follow this with great difficulty. That's my first general comment. I, let's work with the conservation easement. I saw a, this handed to me, the town staff, first was a 200 and some page document yesterday. And I asked them, can you please send me what I need to look at? And Kathleen and Andrew did that. I was working off that colored picture of the conservation easement. Can we call that up, please? It was in the application.
Yeah, I think if he's talking about the colored one, I think he's talking about my sketch that I gave. And just for clarification of what this was, after our last meeting, just as a point of discussion, I wanted to show what was my understanding of the proposed open space that was designated on the set of plans, which is that back area plus the additional two acres that was proposed as part of the revision at the last meeting. And then also outlining a potential concert, additional conservation easement area that wasn't part of the open space. It wasn't to designate that that's open space and that's conservation. It was truly just a graphic so that we could start a conversation about what is open space and what is area that's not open space that includes wetlands that we should have a conversation about. So just as a clarification of how this was originally created.
Is that you, Kathleen, talking?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, that's what I based my comment letter on, not on what the applicant showed us this evening, this evening. So that may be some of the confusion. That is what I was working on.
So, so based on what the applicant did show this evening, were you able to see, yeah, were you able to see on the plans where that outline was? Because I know that hatches a little late.
I would like to put that back up because it's a big improvement over what that was.
Just a moment.
You blow it up a bit, please. Okay. So you've achieved a lot of what I'm recommending here. I'm not terribly concerned about that piece at the, in the corner. I'm trying to orient myself. That's the piece where the trails are in that? I am concerned, though, that this conservation restriction, how far is it from the actual wetland? Seems very narrow in places. And I, you're getting there. It's very, it's a great step in the right direction. But I think that those seepages need to have more conserved area between them and the open space. That's my first comment. Because see, some of this open space, some of this conservation easement is right up to the edge of the wetland. So that's my first comment on that. You look at the lower corner, the, I don't understand why there is this piece of land between the two groups of seepages that is not conserved. What is the rationale behind that? And what is the rationale of having these lines, these crosshatched areas, almost going right to the edge of the wetland? And they're not, it just seems to need to be buffered a bit. What's your upland review area?
It's 100 feet. But, but Dr. Clemens, I don't know.
Who is talking, please?
Chris Russo.
Who?
I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Yes. And who are you?
I'm Chris Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
So I don't know if it's, if it's clear. That area down in what we'll say the bottom right, that is between the two conservation easements, that is open space. And so it, and it is above those seepages as well. So there's, there's an open space easement over that. And then this would be a conservation easement on top of it. The open space easement, you know, you couldn't build up there. You couldn't, you couldn't put a building, you couldn't put a shed, you couldn't put a, a community building. You can't build on there. So that's blanketing the whole thing. And then the conservation easement is on top of that. So, so if they wanted to, you know, if the town wanted trails back there, they, you know, they could allow. There's trails there now. They're legal. It's trespassing. But, you know, people don't walk out there. It's not a big deal. But, but, but the town could decide, hey, we're gonna formally, in this open space area, we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna allow people to walk there and have those trails. But it's not, I just want you to be, you know, to understand, that's not just open area in between that conservation easement.
What is it?
It's, it's covered by open space. It's, it is, it has an easement over.
I understand. But why can't you do the slopes, put that into the conservation easement? And the one that's near the, we've got that red line, why can't you at least buffer those seeps with some more forest right up to the edge? You know that Matt can tell you there's a certain, you know, area of intrusion along any line. Now, that's gonna, I just think you could do better and still have that piece of land for the neighbors to walk on. That's my professional opinion. You could do, you could do a better job of protecting those seepages in the conservation easement.
If they wanted passage.
I don't hear you but saying.
I'm Jason Edwards for the record. So Dr. Clemens, you're basically saying that to extend the conservation easement on the high side here up to the red buffer line? That's the review area?
I would recommend that. I recommend having it on that central piece that sits between the two pairs of seepages. And then you could have that piece of land in the corner for hiking. And then you've really protected those seepages from intrusion and that. I imagine you're gonna monument it, correct?
Yes, we have a monument that are detailed in the plan down through. What about access to the rear piece? Though we'd have to have, I mean, there's access from the front or Banner Drive up above. I, we had left a small, narrow passageway along the side of Lot 8. It was not within conservation easement so that they would have a walking path made up to this back area. So.
That's fine. That's fine. The idea is, these seepages are a really interesting cluster, very unique. As I said before, Tusky salamanders are functionally extinct in Fairfield County. You have a unique situation with steep slopes and seepages where you have, where something exists there, which has largely been lost in the rest of the county and most of New Haven County. It's a very unique aquatic ecosystem. And I think you should try to protect it to the maximum extent that is practical. And I think you can do better. I understand you want to have people in the back get to that piece, but I think I'd like to see the seepages buffered by more conservation area and that central piece also put into it. Then I think you've done a very good job as far as the conservation easement overlaying on the open space.
Yeah, I'm just gonna try to draw a line on here where, put the lines. So, I mean, are you thinking the entire front area here of this piece? Or should that be left open for access to the open space? You know, if we.
Where's the access to the open space?
You know, you've got front of the lower 111 here. So if the town wanted, they ever have access, that would be a point of access. Or they could access from Sun Valley Drive to the rear piece.
That would be the better. I mean, I just think you want to keep people out of that cent, that central little wedge. I mean, look at it. You have it right down to the, to one of the seepages. To me, that's an ecological wetland complex you could protect as a unit. And certainly you could have people access the open space from Sun Valley Drive.
I think, you know, we'd be, the applicant would be open to expanding it to suggested areas. That's, that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm curious, just from Jim DeMeo's perspective, the.
Ryan, your name.
I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Ryan Kelly, Dr. Clemens, just for confirmation.
Thank you.
I'm just curious if. I'm just curious if if the town engineer has a perspective on the small space along the road. Um, I know you're talking about making that conservation easement. I think the applicant was suggesting perhaps the town needs or wants access off of the road there. And so I do agree with your, your perspective on protecting that space to its, to our greatest capacity. But is that detrimental to to town, uh, to the town if any, any type of maintenance is needed along the roadways? I'm not sure of the answer to that, honestly. I understand the intention of the applicant leaving that space there as well.
James, are you there? Can you maybe make a comment on that?
Yes, sir, James DeMayo, town engineer. Uh, just to be clear, Commissioner, uh, you're talking the space along Lot Eight or along Monroe Turnpike?
I believe along Monroe Turnpike is where we're talking about.
I was both actually, it would be both.
Your suggestion.
I did leave an area of wetlands out of the conservation easement about, uh, I think twenty-five, thirty feet back off the road, James. Um, on the new road, and then I had left the front of uh section along one eleven out too. So I don't know how close you want to go.
So James, I guess both. Uh, you know, are we doing public works a disservice by turning that into conservation easement space? Are we creating a risk by doing that in those two spaces?
So so the area to the, the front and the right, um, I would say no.
We can use a cursor, please, this is Dr. Clemens. Can you show what we're talking about? Um, so I can, I can see what.
Yes, thank you. So so on on this area here, uh, no, because that, that property is to remain fifteen thirty-six Monroe Turnpike and not be open space. So that would not be town property in that area. So I don't have any objections or really opinions on that. I do, a long Lot Eight. Um, I do like the small strip that allows the town from the new road to access into the northwest corner of the lot. That way, at least we have a way to get back there with, that stays outside of the conservation easement and doesn't force us onto uh private property at that point. But possibly in planning and zoning, we may end up with an easement if, if that's the case anyway in order to access. So it, uh, to summarize, front right, honestly, no opinion either way. Um, the back one, it's nice to make sure that we have access to that. And and we kind of do need to maintain that, have some form of access. But that could be worked through, through planning and zoning as well, if needed.
The one, the one in the back there is not a problem, the one that the town wants. Where's that Lot Eight? That's fine, it's not a problem. It touches a little bit of one seepage. And you, the areas, as the things, as the seepages get steeper, it's important. The other seepage on the lower part, above where it says Town of Monroe, looks like a hammerhead shark. I mean, that's, that's the area that's very important. I mean, if you don't want to protect it all the way down there, that's fine. I just think the conservation easement should protect to the maximum extent practical the steeply graded seepages, the headwaters, and not encumber, meant not not make something that the town is going to have to violate for another reason. Seems like it's attainable.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. That was actually going to be, I was going to.
Ben.
Respond, oh, I'm sorry, uh, this is Commissioner Ben Xavier. Uh, that was going to be my same question. I was a little confused as to why that was, that was like that, but uh, that answered my question.
Okay.
Commissioner Paul Fernandez, just one quick clarification. I think, James, you mentioned that the engineer indicated that we couldn't, you couldn't put a span bridge there and you could only use a culvert. Is that our engineer, James DeMayo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, and and Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, James DeMayo, um, the, the reason why the town does, does not want to accept a bridge is, it all comes down to how this application is being presented. Um, and the way it's being presented i- is a formal subdivision where the road and all the infrastructure in the road would be turned over to the town. That's the reason why um we, we would not want to accept a span or a uh, or a three-sided box. But we're not opposed to any developer doing anything they want on private property, essentially.
And just to clarify, and I'm going to read my notes because I want to be very clear about this. I know we've talked about this before. Both agencies, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetland Commission, are statutorily authorized and serve separate and independent functions with separate and distinct jurisdictions and authorities. So each of you, you know, serve different authorities. Neither agency may delegate its authority to another agency, including without limitations, conditioning its approval upon the action of another agency. So the inland wetlands should not base its decision on any speculation relative to what the Planning and Zoning Commission may do upon its review, rather upon, you need to make a decision on your jurisdictional reasoning and duties to regulate and protect the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town. So you guys are two separate entities, you serve two different purposes, you serve two different authorities. So I know that James is stating this. However, he, that is something that we worked through in the Planning and Zoning Commission. He's giving you a heads up to see, you know, if the commission is willing to entertain, you know, the four-sided and have these mitigation measures. But it's not that you can't, it's not that you have to accept it. Um, but I do believe that, you know, it's in everybody's best interest to understand, you know, what the town engineer is thinking when he does his review.
My, but my only thing to say to that, though, Kathleen, is, is this is, James is the town engineer, so James is the one, you know, I mean, the town is proposing a four-sided box culvert in another application. So we're, we're, you know, it's not just because it's a requirement of P and Z. It's, it's what the town has stated is their, is their standard. So uh, I, I don't, I think there's a difference there, you know, it, it's, we're following the tower guidelines on that.
I still spread my statement.
But it's not, but like, it's not a P and Z regulation that says this has to be.
Correct.
A span.
Correct.
Sorry, this has to be a four-sided box culvert.
It's not the P and Z regulation, but that's actually something that would be worked through in planning and zoning. So like, for example, like, James is giving this commission a heads up. James does an excellent job at trying to front load his review. And he can i- interject at any point. Tried to front load his review during the inland wetland commission because he wants to make sure that the applicant has the opportunity to really present what he's also going to be reviewing at planning and zoning. It doesn't make sense for him to only review a portion of it and then planning and zoning review the other portion of it and say, oh, well, this should really, you know, change and that would affect the wetlands approval. So he really looks at everything holistically. Um, and the crossing of this and as it relates to the subdivision road, although the impacts are being reviewed in the inland wetland portion, the mechanisms for that would also be part of his planning and zoning review. So he does kind of review this in a holistic manner. So he is letting this commission know that as part of the planning and zoning subdivision and acceptance of that road during the planning and zoning subdivision approval, what he is going to be looking for is the four-sided culvert.
Okay, sure. If I, if I could, um, Dr. Dr. Clemens, this is Commissioner Ryan Kelly again. Um, in your, in your letter to us, your most recent letter, you're highlighting the stream crossing. My impression is your concern with the baffle culvert. So so just to bring us to where we are, you know, the discussion of if a, if a four-sided culvert can can be a workable solution that will help preserve and protect the wetlands or not damage the wetlands. Your concern with the baffle culvert appears to be that there is not a lot of history regarding that type of culvert, uh, that there are not case studies or reports that show its success uh for the wildlife, the stream biota, um, as you referenced. Is, is there, do you have a general concern about its? Do you have a concern about it beyond just the fact that there aren't those case studies? Because I understand that there, we may not have those studies, but it also does not mean that the culvert cannot be a successful implementation in this project. And so I'm just, I'm curious if you have other concerns about it beyond the lack of data, as you highlighted.
Well, I ask, Curtis asked before we move on, is this thing that's outlined now in blue the addition to the conservation easement area? I mean.
Yes, that's what I was going to try to sketch out was just that front area, we just do that whole thing as part of it, yes.
Excuse me?
Yes, we would, we would include the entire area there.
Then you really have protected the bulk of the, those seepage slopes, which is great. Okay, let, let's talk about the, the stream crossing. I never encountered a situation like this. Where every better biological alternative is removed from discussion because it doesn't meet the engineering standards or the desire of the town engineer or the applicant. Let's, let's go backward. The first thing I said is when I first looked at it, why can't we not have a stream crossing and access it through one of the lots watering the turnpike? And I was told, well, DOT wouldn't allow that because of the six hundred or whatever. Made sense to me. I accepted that at face value. So now we have a situation where we have, I'm talking to you as an ecologist. The most feasible and protective measure was thrown off the table at the beginning. Did anyone actually ask the DOT? Or is this just an assumption? I feel that that was the first sort of stepwise progression which fell this. So accepting that in fact we have to cross the stream, I looked at all the other projects I've worked on and suggested a variety of things that have worked biologically. One of them is the three-sided culvert with a natural, where basically is almost the standard. In many towns, this is best management practices to conserve streams are basically to have an oversized box called three-sided box culvert. Then I proffered the other idea. You could end up with basically a box culvert where you would have one, but another one that would handle heavy flows for wildlife passage. Again, that was discarded. Then you have suggested this ba- this baffled culvert where there's absolutely no data that is, demonstrates it works for the kind of biota we're talking about. And frankly, I'm also chairman of my own planning and zoning commission. And I understand the ping pong that can occur between inland wetlands and watercourses and planning and zoning. But I also say it's the duty of the applicant to put into the record, this is a public proceeding, why this works. We certainly got lots of stuff, why it worked from an engineering perspective. We got the Army Corps standards. There's nothing in the record that has demonstrated that this works. That should have been put in the record by the applicant, support the case they're making. That's just common sense of building a record. Then I had the attorney basically get into the Avalon Bay, which is a very old case, completely discounting subsequent court cases about biota. Certainly, the River Sound case uh has turned some of that upside down. I know about these cases because I was involved in each and every one. So destruction of in-stream biota is a problem. It's not like the box turtles where you can argue, or even a vernal pool species back and forth. This is destruction of biota within the stream corridor. That falls squarely within the purview of what this wetlands agency should be considering. Now, as far as this baffled culvert, I see no data. I tried to look for any data, I think I came up with the same results. There's nothing about salamanders or anything similar or macroinvertebrates. It's all fish-based. Then we talk about riprap. Keep talking about we're going to riprap it. Riprap is very unfriendly to salamanders. Riprap is an angled, sharp-edged uh rock. Combined with high velocity will basically tear these animals apart. So we're still talking about, not thinking about the impact to the actual in-stream biota. I would still prefer, and I've got on the record, a three-sided box culvert and with a second three-sided culvert next to it. This has been done in quite a few projects. I understand you, it gets more stability, structural stability to it. But if we're going to use a baffled thing at eleven percent grade, one of the commissioners thought, that's pretty street grade. Well, normally what you have in a normal stream channel, you have a series of pools that form uh in a stepwise progression. That's how you go down a steep grade in many areas. You don't have the water running down a straight bloom, but you have it sort of meander through a series of plunge pools to get out. So make no mistake about it, what you're substituting is a very unnatural uh situation of untested, untested, it's been untested. That's the truth, that's from where I sit. But you have to make a decision based on what you, and I said very early on, you can accept my advice, you could ignore it. I don't guarantee that my advice is going to produce your desired conservation or development outcome. Really up to you. But I'm not going to accept, I can't accept what has been shown without more data, without discussion of the riprap, without discussion of maybe the more natural ways to go through a series of pools. That, that's really, that's really what I have to say. And I am very pleased that you are not protecting with a conservation easement. The most important ecological wetland feature on the site are these steeply graded forested hillside seeps and that you're going to keep people and other activities out of them and going to let natural processes continue. So that's what I have to say. Long-winded answer to what you asked.
All right, thank you, Dr. Clemens. Do you guys have any comments on?
Just, you know, highlight what the end of Dr., this is Jason Edwards for the record. Um, the end of what Dr. Clemens just said there was preservation of the most important ecological feature on the site. Now, at this point, with what we've suggested here, it's over fifty-four percent of this site that we're, we're preserving. Um, and that's all the most sensitive ecological area that you just identified as versus one thousand square feet of disturbance of road crossing that we're going to replace to the best of our ability with the box that we've been building for what we can use. And we don't have other options to go beyond this. Uh, the town engineers said that this is what they want. So uh, you know, we, we were, started this process with a three-sided box culvert and we were then instructed to come to this. So we've, as I said before, jumped through quite a few hoops to get to this point. And we've given a lot, we're giving a lot. We feel that it's a, it's a fair trade for, for what we're asking for.
For the, for the record, uh, is there then a version of this application with a three-sided box culvert?
I, I don't recall that was part of this application or if we recall, we submitted one previously and then withdrew it. I think it was part of that one, um, so it was not on this, this application.
Uh, Commissioner Paul Fernandez, question for James. What's your concern with a three-sided culvert or why did you recommend a four-sided?
Yep, um, yep, so James DeMayo, town engineer. The main concerns are, are that the, is solely on maintenance and the fact that a lot of the culverts or every box style culvert that um I've had issues with even in my professional career has been a three-sided getting undermined. Um, I've never had, I've still have not seen a four-sided that's had any sort of issue like that. So because the application is for. So because the application is for a subdivision where we're going to accept ownership of it after the development, the town does not want to have have any of these. Same thing with a bridge span. Because it's when, when the time comes, it's going to end up being very expensive on the taxpayers or I'd have to find funding or the town would have to find funding to replace potentially soon, replace the structure sooner for only eight residential houses. So you heard my other application, which it impacts four houses. This is a very expensive fix for four houses. You know, same thing like this. So it's purely from a maintenance standpoint, not my, my view has nothing, I don't want to say nothing to do with environmental. It does have to do a little bit with environmental, but it's mainly from a maintenance and, and just engineering feasibility stance.
Thank you, James.
And to piggyback on that, so I know you said that's your preference. Is a three-sided completely out of the question? Like there's no way planning and zoning would approve that? Or is it strictly because it's a numbers thing?
So I'm just going to reword that question. Planning and zoning, as you guys are, are your own entity. You don't have to actually take staff recommendations. So it's not if planning and zoning, it would, it would just continue to be his, what he would recommend to planning and zoning.
No, I understand. But like Dr. Clemens was saying before, we're trying to avoid the ping pong. If we say, no, 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 we're going to, we really want a three-sided and then we push them to design a three-sided and it goes into planning and zoning. So well, we can't approve a three-sided. You got to push it back. You're not who you're trying to avoid before. So that's why I'm just trying to understand where how hard will they push back on that three-sided?
Yep. So basically the director of Public Works and I are and deputy director, pretty much everybody are all in a line that we will not accept a three-sided. So that will end up coming to light really in planning and zoning. But I do have to echo what Kathleen mentioned earlier, that, that the Wetlands Commission and the planning and zoning are two separate entities and different responsibilities and purviews. Again, you know, what you, you know, you got to weigh in on the application as it's presented in front of you with the information that's presented in front of you. So and that's essentially what I'm doing. The way that this application is currently structured, the town's going to end up owning this structure. Therefore, I'm trying to give the applicant a heads up. Same thing. A lot of my comments in the beginning had to do with road configuration and construction. Well, that ended up impacting the wetlands and disturbances, amount of fill, things like that. So they do, my, my review kind of goes hand in hand a lot. But essentially, you know, again, this shouldn't be part of your, your deliberations, but in the future, the Department of Public Works is not going, is not going to accept a three-sided box culvert.
I will say as, as a staff member and seeing all of the different priorities that the town has to manage. I think from an environmental perspective, the commission can take into consideration the fact that there is some environmental benefit to have something that is going to be able to be maintained and last for a long period of time as compared to potentially creating a condition with a crossing that is going to be difficult for the town to fund, maintain and get to. Do you know what I'm saying? So from a maintenance perspective, there is an environmental benefit to put something in that will be able to sustain a longer period of time in tax. If the commission, you know, that's one thing the commission can take into consideration. And then the question is, is the environmental additions and benefits that they're adding to it, you know, is that mitigating plus the addition of, you know, a very extensive conservation easement? Is that mitigating the impact they're having, you know, to the wetlands?
Thank you, James. James, just one more quick question for you. This is Commissioner Kelly. When when did the four-sided culvert become the standard? The standard for the town?
So, so the town has not had to, the town has been slow to replace culverts before me or before my time here at the, with the town. It seems like as soon as I got here, we're replacing a whole bunch. But it's, it's a stance that the director has had for, for a few years. I mean, he's been the director. He's been with the town for 16 years now. So, so it's been a while and I don't know of any, I don't know of any off the top of my head. I'd have to, again, my knowledge of the town is only going back a year and a half, but I don't know of any three-sided that have gone in the past 10 years. At least I don't know of any. There may have been, one may have snuck its way in. But I, but typically, you know, it's, it's been four-sided. However, I don't know of how many applications have needed them. A lot of them are still using pipes on smaller things such as driveways that don't warrant the full flow like a, you know, like this. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have like a statistic of how many have been done in the past 10 or 15 years.
Understood. Mr. Chesnowsky. White Hill Drive, does that have a culvert?
No, it does not. What I'll tell you, at Northbrook, we have tool which handles the Quonic River. If you come in through Northbrook, obviously you can see the water, bodies of water on each side. That is actually one of the beginning parts of the Quonic River. And it wraps around phase one and goes through a series of huge, large box culverts, four-sided. And we did that in 1983. And then that Quonic River wraps around the back of Northbrook. And we had to do the same thing there with large box culvert, four-sided. Blanket Meadows also has four-sided box culverts. I don't know if there's any others that we did. They're, you know, Connecticut Precast makes these box culverts with baffles all the time. They're throughout Fairfield County. I don't believe that, you know, it's not our only idea. I went to them to see if this is possible. Since we do it all the time. So whether it's been approved by wetlands, is there a case study about it? I don't know. You know, it could be done by towns along the, you know, Fairfield County that can get to stop rackets or, you know, from heavy flows going through, but sediment, it slows it up. But it also acts as a good ecological function for the environment. Okay, that's the way I see it. I'm not a professional, I'm not a doctor, but Dr. Clemens is, but this is frequent. You know, we're not the only, the first ones to do this. So, but no, the other thing I wanted to mention, the doctor Clemens asked about the rackets. We could replace instead of riprap. We could use river stone. If you know what river stone looks like? It's right in front of Jersey Mike's, the little, that stone is right there. It's smooth, it's round. And I thought that would be an joke.
I think that's a better solution than the riprap.
I'm sorry?
That's a better solution than the riprap.
Oh, yeah.
It's acceptable to James.
Well, it has to be acceptable by the town engineer too.
As long as it will stay, then yes, I'm amenable to whatever base goes in as long as it doesn't move during a storm.
That's why one side, the baffles are staggered and you can explain it that we've got a higher one and then a lower one. And then over here, we've got a higher one and over here, we've got a lower one. So it's staggered both ways. So should we pay?
We have provided previously a calculation to James to support what he's saying, that the riprap wouldn't move. So we have to find a calculation that fits the river rocks. So assuming we can do that and we can, you know, make James happy with it, we can find that too. But I just don't know that for sure. We can calculate it to get satisfaction that it will work.
I would also like to ask, just going forward, I recognize that again, there are not case studies specific to salamanders. Any type of documentation that can be shared of implementation of this type of culvert and, and the success that followed, salamander or not, would be useful to me. It would be useful to see how, how that culvert has, has operated post-implementation.
So I hear what's being, this is Commissioner Smith. I hear what's being said and I really, it's not an easy subject, but I lived in Arizona for a long time. They have feast or famine with regard to monsoon season and culverts. Culverts will work. The three-sided culverts are there and they're working. They're not, they're not a maintenance issue for, for the folks because they're well-engineered culverts. I don't understand why we can't just shore up the, the entrance and exits and make sure that, you know, we have enough mass there so that and rock, you know, good sized rock alongside that, you know, that prevents the undermining of the structure. I just, I appreciate what James is saying. I don't want this town to have to spend money on maintenance. I don't want these people to be held ransom in their own houses because the road fails them with another storm like we had, the thousand-year storm that James refers to. But I just got to say that I'm just, I am still not convinced that a four-sided culvert is going to give us the environmental protection that we need of this wetland. This wetland is special. It's not normal. And I am not convinced yet. I'm sorry if you think I'm being thick-headed, but I don't see the data and I'm a data-driven person.
Well, but Commissioner, this is, this is what I'm, I'm I'm bristling a little bit about the conversation about how the Wetlands Commission and the P and C Commission are totally unrelated and, and, you know, you don't have to, you know, you, you don't have to consider it because the, again, it is not alternative. It's feasible and prudent alternative. And so, and this is straight out of the case. What the court says, we define feasible to mean as a matter of sound engineering. And if James is saying three-sided culverts is not sound engineering, then under this, it's not feasible. And so we are trying to propose then what is a feasible and prudent alternative. But, you know, and that's, it's specifically to prevent a situation where you would say it has to be three-sided and then we would go to P and C and they would say, no, that's not sound engineering. And then we're back here and they said, he said it's not sound engineering. And then this property, I mean, it's unfortunate, but the way that this property is laid out, it's not like there are seven lots that you can access from the road and then the eighth lot you can't get to because you'd have to do a crossing. This, it's right at the beginning of where is the only location from a safety standard that we can get to into this site. So we are trying to deal with that situation and design, again, design a feasible and prudent alternative, the most feasible and prudent alternative. And I think what James is saying is that a three-sided culvert is not feasible. That's, he said feasibility at the end of the statement there. It's not feasible. And, and the four-sided culvert is a feasible one that they would be willing to accept.
With all due, with all
I got to step in there. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The, I got to interject Attorney Russo, I apologize, but that you can, you can install a three-sided box culvert that's engineered properly. You can do a span that's engineered properly. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is the town is just not going to accept the maintenance of those types of structures. Not that they can't be done, not that they can't be engineered and designed appropriately. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. It's, I'm not saying that, no, it can't be done. I'm just saying the town, the town is not willing to accept the ownership of those.
That goes to the prudent part. So is it feasible, it's feasible to have it prudent? And he's saying it's not prudent.
With all, with all due respect, Mr. Russo, and I appreciate your, your point and where you're coming from. But what it, what it could be interpreted as is that you're saying that we need to sacrifice the integrity of our decision because of something that is going to be decided or perceived to be decided in planning and zoning. And that's, that's not in line with our regulations and, and our responsibilities as a commission. So I'm not against the four-sided culvert, like sight unseen, I'm not. I'm interested in, in hearing more about it and learning more about where it has been implemented. But we still have to respect the integrity of this commission and our responsibility first and foremost.
And I, and I understand that. What I'm trying to say is this, this applicant has worked as much as he can to minimize the impact. He's lost a lot. He's, he's minimized the impact on the wetland down to 1100. Again, because this is the only way in that DOT has, and we checked with DOT, that this is the only way that we can get into this, into this site. We have 10 acres of conservation easement well beyond, you know, anything I've seen really on, on term latest. And, and Dr. Clemens came in and said, look, I think that this should be expanded even further. Cover those areas. We've agreed to expand it further. So we, it's, it's not like we're saying, you know, we are trying everything we can redesign this culvert to, to again, address some of the impacts that are being discussed. But I, you know,
And we do appreciate it.
It didn't seem like P and C has a regulation that says, you know, no three-sided box culvert. It's, it's just a town standard. We don't design things that are not to town standard. You know, we don't come in, propose, if the town says this is our standards, we design it to the town's standards. That's, that's what we do.
I appreciate that. And we do appreciate what, what you have done in terms of the modifications to the open space and the easement that we, we see the effort that, that you as an applicant as a whole are making. But again, it doesn't change the fact that we have to make a decision in line with our responsibilities as a commission. So again, I'm still, I'm very, very interested in learning more about places where this has been implemented and, and the results of, of that implementation. That for me, that, that would help me understand the process. I recognize that four-sided culverts are what are being implemented across town in other projects. I, I understand that and that creates conflict in my own mind as well. Why is this scenario so dramatically different? I'm cognizant of that. I'm just sharing that thought with you. But it, again, it's, it's highlighted as a significant concern. It's something we have to take seriously. And I think for us to be able to make a judgment, we, I need more information. I don't want to speak for everybody.
I have a question for Dr. Clemens.
Who is asking me a question?
Michael Chesnowsky, Dr. Clemens, I'm the applicant. How are you doing?
Who am I talking to, please?
Michael Chesnowsky. Michael Chesnowsky. The applicant. Okay, so we originally had planned to come in above where we are now and it affected over 3,000, or 3,500 square feet roughly?
Yeah.
Roughly. Okay, so we went back, redesigned to bring this box culvert lower, which would have less of an impact ecologically. Okay, if you saw above where we had it originally, there are areas there, it's flat, it's suitable for salamanders. And do they, do they travel uphill? Or down? Dr. Clemens?
Is that a question? They travel both ways.
Okay, so now we're, we're implementing where the box culvert is going to be. It looks like a narrow strip that's exiting the prime area that salamanders would live in, which is all those fingers and all that wetland flat area that used to be lot nine. Isn't that more of an ideal area than below the box culvert exiting water course there?
Can I answer your question? I don't know what's below there. Can I answer your question? I don't know what's below there. The concept of ecological connectivity is there could be other nice wetland complexes further downstream.
Okay, so let me just explain to you.
I was asked to study going downstream any further than this project, so we don't know. But let me say something because I think we've gotten really bogged down in this discussion about the culvert. I think you have protected a very significant resource, the seepages. You lost a lot, lost a building lot when you came back with this application. But I just would like people to go back to what I said too, about spans and oversized three-sided culverts. Why culverts blow out is because you're throttling down the flow of water. If you had enough space, and that could be two three-sided culverts or a span, you wouldn't have the problem that James is talking about. The problems on these four-sided culverts is they're just too small. If they were bigger, which now approaches sort of a semi-span, or two or three next to each other, it would be more natural and would carry the water. So I think we've got to be very clear. If you want. May I finish, please?
Go ahead.
If you want to put that in, that is up between you and the commission. I think there's a better way to do it based on the concept of having a larger, larger culverts or spans. That's up to the commission. I think you have done a lot protecting what you have done. But if we're talking about ecological connectivity, we don't know what's moving up and down the system and whether what you're proposing is going to be an impediment to the movement. I don't have those answers. Neither do you.
I know what happens downstream of this area here. Coming out of the proposed box culvert that we would install is a very narrow water course, which goes into a 42-inch pipe that goes under Route 111. And it goes through the same-sized pipe under Stevenson, the old Stevenson Lumber Company, and exits way down on the Voice Halfway River. Okay? You know, so is it that, are we affecting the ecological situation downstream of that? With a four-sided box culvert? I just don't see it, you know? And, you know, I would think that, I'm not a turtle or salamander or anything, but the prime area for them is above this, not below it. If they do go below it, they're going to end up as fish bait in Lake Zor. But, you know, that's what I'm telling you, what's below this water course. It's probably a quarter mile of pipe before it gets to the Voice Halfway River. And after that, it goes into Lake Zor. Just wanted to let you know that. But as for, you know, I agree with the town engineer for maintenance purposes and for long-lasting, you know, support to a box culvert that supports the road, I think is the proper way to go. We've done it before. James, the town is doing it right now on the, on the road that. Town road. And we've done it all over town. Many water courses, serious water courses, more serious than what this is. I just wanted to mention that.
So I think I'd like to piggyback on all their concerns and, one, I think we do need to see some more data. So if you guys can provide some more information on the four-sided stepped box drain, I think that'll help us make a better determination.
Okay.
And also, I know this sounds like maybe going a little in reverse. I'd like to see an alternate plan with what Dr. Clemens is suggesting, with a double three-sided, two three-sided box drain side by side. And that's something I'd like James to take a look at. And I know he's not a big fan of those from a maintenance perspective. But if they are sized properly and they do function and last, that sounds like it maybe solves all of our issues. So maybe we have a Plan A and a Plan B that we could both look at, something that you guys have actually gone through the calculations and said, we're going to do a two-three-sided box drain side by side, as he suggested. This is what this would look like. Because like we were saying, we don't have to go with what James says. We're trying to take that into consideration. We don't necessarily have to. So I think it's best for us to have a alternate plan for us to be able to look at two side by side, especially if we have the data on the four-sided box drain and say, listen, we could do this, that, there's a good chance they're not going to approve, or this one, that they will approve, but we've got data now to support it. So if that's okay with you guys to.
Yeah, but the town engineer won't accept it.
We understand that.
Yeah.
But at the same time, all things being equal, we're not necessarily here to accept the four-sided. So I think what we need though is a realistic plan for both options for us to be able to review and then make a recommendation on, this is the one we approve. Okay? I'm not saying we're going to prove one or the other. I just think we need to have both side by side along with more data points. And that will help us make that final determination. Okay?
As long as we have time, I don't know where we are in the class.
We are 28 days through the potential 65 days, which the applicant can grant. So just as a friendly reminder of how the timeline works, once the public hearing is open, we have 35 days to close the public hearing. That occurred on.
Before these guys agree, do you.
Very big file.
Commission agree with that?
Yeah.
What I just said?
I'm sorry. I was listening, but I don't know what you signed up for. I, I.
A second alternative. Like to see a second alternative.
Right.
Double box.
Yep.
Three-sided.
Yep.
And more data points on the four-side.
Right. Okay. Great.
That's all I'm asking. If you guys are all okay with that.
The only thing I'd like to point out to Chris is the feasible and prudent, maybe before the next meeting. Yeah, I'd like to, it's for water courses and wetlands. There was a Public Act summary 96157, Chris. If you could look up, look up that. It defines prudent and feasible with regard to us. And so, just to be clear, going forward, we want to make sure.
Go ahead. If Jamie's still on, if we're going to present this, can he just give us an answer right now? Is he going to accept the double three-sided box culvert?
See, this is where I also struggle because I believe this commission is fully within their purview to request this information from the applicant. Because their sole view is to, again, evaluate the impacts to the regulated area. I will say again, yeah, our stance is pretty firm on the no three-sided. Again, this is only being an issue due to the format of the application, i.e. a subdivision. So if we were talking about an application that did not have, that the town was not going to accept the crossing, I would not have the same objections.
I mean, we will present that. I just wanted.
I know, and we knew that. Yeah. So no, I knew that. So, all right, back to the dates.
I actually, if I could, Catherine, just one last thing. And maybe this is a big ask, and maybe the answer is no, and it's a big inconvenience. I know that we did a site walk earlier this summer, I think in early July, late June, one or the other. I feel like I'm a visual person. I would benefit from looking at this crossing spot and seeing exactly what we are talking about. I think that Mr. Chuznowski's commentary about what's on the other side is valid, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a fuzzy visual in my mind from that day where I was observing the whole entire site.
And you were also looking at the previous proposed crossing location?
Correct.
The current location was not actually a.
Correct. So, and I know that not all of the commissioners, some were there and present that day, not all. I feel like I may benefit from that. And I know that time is of the essence, but I think I would like to then schedule.
Want to walk it again then?
Yeah.
Yeah, just in just the crossing zone, honestly.
Andrew can schedule that, so he'll coordinate that.
If we're there, maybe those people will see the rest of the property.
This is the only thing that really we need to discuss. I don't know if we need to see the rest of the property.
Do you want to limit it? Because Jim or Bones want to see other things?
No, just a culvert. That's our focus.
Do you want to schedule it now? Log it all together?
I would.
I think trying to coordinate, trying to coordinate a bunch of schedules like that, I think is hard to do on the spot.
Right. Anyways.
Swiftly.
So that you're concerned about the timing of.
So we have 35 days to open and close the public hearing. That would have been on August 28th, 2024. The applicant has granted those extensions up into today, August, September 25th, 2024. So we are 28 days through our 65 days. So the applicant has granted an extension for another two weeks to whenever the next meeting.
We've got October 9th, and then we've got October.
On 23rd, I've got that.
With all due respect, I would like to see that upper portion that we didn't see from the other street.
So let's discuss it with Andrew. We can, we can forge the specifics of it.
Thank you.
And I just have too many meetings in my head. The 9th.
October 9th is the next meeting.
Yeah. So the applicant will have to be willing to grant an extension to October 9th.
Jason, is that enough time to prepare the requested documentation? And get it to us? That gives you.
And we'll give it to you. It's whether you have enough.
Week and a half.
Yeah, I mean, we just do it on, but I mean, we're waiting for that, I think, and if we need to do a lot of it, we will.
We can do another letter. We can.
Yeah, rather than giving it more time, just, you know, keep pressure.
So, one, I just want to mention, we still need the public to speak. But after they've had a chance to speak, we need to vote to continue the public hearing. We'll continue the public hearing to October 9th, but if for some reason we don't have this meeting at that time, I would ask that if you can get it, a request to basically extend it 48 hours in advance so we can put it on the agenda. What has happened in the past, if the day of the meeting, because we have to, we have to continue it to a specific date so people can follow it. But if they just look at the agenda before it comes out and it says it's, it's not going to be heard at this meeting, we're going to continue it to another, to the next meeting, that allows the public to know in enough time to not come out. The issue that happened at the last meeting was it was like the day of the meeting we decided and people spent time and adjusted their schedules and were planning on being here. We wanted to make sure they have the opportunity to be here.
All right.
Can I ask one thing, please? This is Michael Clemens talking. There's a couple of things that came up tonight that I think would be very helpful. First, we talked about the river stone, but James is going to have to decide if it works. So I think that would be something I would like to see if the river stone gets put into that baffled culvert, if that's what you go with. The other thing is, I think it would be helpful to really know what we're connecting to downstream. If in fact, it's a series of pipes and going to Lake Zor, this may be not so important. You know, I'm looking at something on a lot, not looking at something on a denveric pattern. So I think that would be helpful, also information. Part of this is, I don't want to talk like an attorney, but you got to build the record to make the case for these things. And right now, that's my big problem. You had no data about the baffled culvert, whether it works or doesn't work. You had no argument one way or the other about what we were connecting to, which is really important. So I think some of this stuff is about, in the applicant's interest, to build the record that supports what they're doing. And I feel like it's like pushing them to do that because the integrity of the record is extremely important. And I can speak to Matt Pop. I can't speak to the engineer. We have this discussion. I'm not going to have a discussion with their professionals other than Matt and I can discuss stuff. That's appropriate. For me to engage in a planning session with their engineer and Mr. DeMaio is not appropriate. At least that's not, as I understand, Freedom of Information Act. So anyway, but I do think the applicant has heard tonight that there are things they definitely can do. They can discuss the river stone. They can look at the efficacy of having a double, three, double, two-side-by-side, three-sided box culverts. And they can actually ask the question that, I can't pronounce his name, but the applicant, the principal, said if it's, if it's connecting to something that has no value, maybe that's something we should look at too, as part of the overall argument. Are you hearing me?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, my video disappeared. Sorry about that.
Jason Edwards for the record. Dr. Clemens, I did mention that to you at the last hearing. I stated that this went directly into a pipe 40 feet downstream of this culvert. And you said that you were concerned with what happens downstream of the wells in that.
If in fact, the entire thing leads into a series of pipes that go to Lake Zor, that's different than 40 feet down. If you're telling me that the entire length of the stream below this development is pipes and nothing else, that's a different thing, but that's up to you to make the argument.
Okay. I can say that for, well, after the storm, I think there was a lot of damage there, so some of those pipes may be gone. But there was a pipe water course all the way out.
Oh, that's, that's an important consideration, but it is up to me to figure that out. I raised the questions and I raised. What happened 40 feet down doesn't make a difference, but if it's the entire water course to Lake Zor, that makes it different.
That's what I said last time too.
All right, so going forward, in the next presentation, if you can bring.
Yeah, I'll bring some mapping.
Bring some mapping of beyond just the scope of this project and where it leads to. That'll help us.
And I'm happy to discuss these technical issues with their ecological person, Mr. Pop. I just don't want to get involved in a planning exercise that is out of, which is not, which is being done outside of the public hearing. That's all. So it's up to you how you want to do it, but there, I don't know what else I can tell you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Clemens.
All right. Before we get to a public comment, I think we'll just take a quick break. Just to give everybody a couple of minutes to do the thing I was doing. So we'll take a 10-minute recess.
I'm muted.
All right, back to, okay. All right, so we are at, do you want to bring up anything before public participation? Were there any other comments that we wanted to review?
As was already discussed, the town engineer had some outstanding comments that he wrote in a memo, which I believe, as was already mentioned, most of them are technical that have to be worked through. And then my comments were all addressed with the exception of just making sure that if we move forward with a conservation easement, we're very clear about what the goals of the language will be and how that's going to get executed, which it sounds like we still have a little more time to work that out.
Okay. I had a couple of general comments for the applicant. This is just based on some of our conversations about what we've read in a lot of the emails that were submitted. And anybody else can jump in beyond just what I'm bringing up, they want. I know a few people brought up the fact, you know, about well water and how, and I think you can probably chime in, or maybe James could chime in. I don't think well water is within the Wetland Commission's purview.
No, as part of, this property is owned, it can be legally subdivided. Yes, they are applying a cluster subdivision regulation to it, but if they weren't applying that, it can still be subdivided. And as part of a subdivision of property in a residentially zoned property. No, as part of um, this property is owned, it can be legally subdivided. Yes, they are applying a cluster subdivision regulation to it, but uh, if they weren't applying that, it can still be subdivided. Um, and as part of a subdivision of property in a residentially zoned property, they are permitted to put wells onto the property in order to support the utilities um, of their homes.
Right, okay, so that's that. Um, somebody else, a few different people mentioned removal of timber out of wetlands, and I don't know if maybe the applicant can speak to that. I'm not sure what they were referring to specifically, other than there were a couple of people that commented on, you're you're not allowed to remove timber from wetlands, which I don't think they plan on removing there, but.
So you're not allowed to remove timber from wetlands, but we're not talking about wetlands here.
Right.
Well, we are for the crossing.
For the cross.
For that specific crossing area, right, that small area. So again, I don't know what some of those comments specifically were referring to, other than several people mentioned removal of timber. You can't remove timber. And again, maybe the applicant can speak to that. I don't know that there's plans for them to remove timber. What is the definition of timber?
Not within any upper review area. I believe we talked on one week about, and we asked specifically, I think, about lot eight. Were you taking anything out of the upper review area? And the and the answer was no.
Right, I didn't think so.
Believe, if you could confirm this, to believe that there will be no trees taken from the upper review area of and the wetlands.
Yeah, that's correct.
And and again, just.
I believe there's a few trees, sorry. This is, I believe there are a few trees, like a half a dozen. Is is timber by definition just a tree, or is it a tree being harvested for lumber?
I would have to look specifically um, at it, but like the removal of a couple of trees is permitted with a permit. So it's not permitted, you can't, if you have a yard and you have trees in your yard and up, you have to come to town, oh, and talk to Andrew. Um, about potentially a permit, either an agent approval, in a wetland commission permit, you know, however that goes down. So um, but we can review, I guess, the question is, does timber have a specific under um, regulations?
Right. And several other people also mentioned that you can't build on wetlands, and I think we all recognize that there's nothing being built, no homes are being built on wetlands, but not even close, so that, I don't think that was really an issue. Like I said, I read it and figured we should address it. Um. Do you guys have anything else that?
The only other thing, and we may want to belay this one, is um, I went to uh, I I went to the to our town employees to find out what open spaces, how open space is defined in town, and we don't have a real definition. We just say open space. I looked at the state, and we don't really. So for the inland wetlands, I am proposing that we say, we say something is, or if something is designated open space, that we'd like to go by certain guidelines, and which you agree to those guidelines. I'm not saying for planning zoning or anybody else, just for us, when we say open space, you know.
So just to be clear, open space does have a definition in planning and zoning. So when we talk about subdivisions and we talk about open space, if you look in the zoning regulations for the town of Monroe, it does clearly outline what open space means, where who can be in ownership of it, things of that nature. So there is a definition, you know, to that. As Attorney Russo has already mentioned, they are applying the town of Monroe's cluster subdivision regulations to this property. So this is an RF two zone. They're proposing one and a half acre lots. They're clustering it in one area in order to preserve all the different fingers of the wetlands. Those regulations are not very clear. The subcommittee right now is building it out, independent of this project. Um, it is going to be related to this project, but independent of this project, building out what that means. And as part of that, we talk about open space. That's where the thirty four percentage came from. The state statutes grants municipalities the availability to implement what they call a cluster development. We're calling it a cluster subdivision. Um, but you have to have a third of the property we dedicate as open space. So that's what gives the Planning and Zoning Commission authority to do this. And there are specific definitions for open space as it relates to that. The idea of open space of the town does, can include access of the public for passive or active recreation. That is, I think, what Dr. Clemens was trying to say at the last meeting, is if you want to restrict that even further.
Yep.
As the inland wetland commission, you can put an additional conservation easement on top of the open space, and as part of that conservation easement, you can do additional restrictions, which are, you know, that you can say that you cannot build trails. You say you cannot do that, because as part of the open space, um, as part of what currently the planning and zoning subcommittee has talked about as being one of the um, intentions of the open space as part of cluster subdivisions, is to allow the preservation of natural resources, but also passive active, passive recreation in the form of trails. So they would permit trails.
Sure. Um, I still don't know that the definition is is the same that we want to use, uh, but I'd like to get that definition. I came here specifically, talked to a number of employees. I was given some things with regard to open space, but there's no definition of open space, except that it's town property.
Again, in the planning and zoning regulations, it does clearly outline what open space is.
Right, if if you could point that out to me, I'd appreciate it.
Send it to you.
Okay, otherwise, I think that we should understand when we're talking open space, that we all agree, because there was some question, Ryan was saying, hey, you know, a dog, dog, walking a dog through there, and I don't, I I thought about it some more, and I said, you know, he's right. We we do need to serve the general public in this open space, so let's agree what's.
If it is defined, it's fine, so let's.
So it's, so I'll I'll take it till later, but it is exhibit forty six for this case, for this particular application, if anybody has any comments.
Correct.
Where I think this commission has the authority to do is talk about your intent for the conservation easement and what restrictions you want to.
Well, however we do it, I I think we need more definition, not just saying that it's open space or. Thank you.
Uh, I think I'd like to move into the public participation at this point, unless we have anything else. Okay, anybody in chambers who'd like to come up and speak, please state their name and address to the record and sign on the sheet. So run up.
My name is Paula Jelly. I live at Tunay Park Street, fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike surrounds me on three sides. First of all, I would like to address Attorney Russo's point about not address, that your purview is not about wildlife. If you read the Connecticut Inland Wetlands Act, and the town's regulations of inland wetlands regulations, takes that Connecticut Act and adds to it. And in a previous hearing, I have printed out and supplied to uh, the commission four full pages of where the Connecticut Inland Wetlands Act points out that wildlife is part of your concern. And overdraft is a word used even in the very first paragraph of the Connecticut Inland Wetlands. And used in the context of protecting photograph of water. That sounds like you're trying, your job is to protect, taking too much water out of the ground. What does that sound like? Sounds like wells to me. Second thing, about the turtles. Uh, Mr. Edwards had presented a photograph of a type of curb that was turtle friendly, and it was slanted. So if they're putting in vertical baffles, that's going to be very difficult for an eastern box turtle. I've testified before that I've had an eastern box turtle in my yard. I would say about this big. And if you know anything about turtles, if they get accidentally turned upside down, which they can on these baffles, um, how are they going to rent themselves? I I don't think that those baffles are a good idea for the culvert. I'm disturbed by the fact that an area that was marked as open space in the year two thousand inland wetland, additional approval of two homes, not four, and a shared driveway instead of a road, is now in lot numbers seven and eight backyards. This is an environmental disaster waiting to happen. So I'm happy to see in that little corner of purple, that that's part of the easement, the conservation easement. But is that little triangle of conservation easement still on that homeowner's number seven's lot that he owns that? This is an environmental disaster waiting to happen. If these lots were much larger, say five acres, this would have less impact on the homeowner's use of his or her property. Homeowners like to have an area for the kids to play, a pool or a deck. These two lots make that impossible, if not tempt homeowners to build illegally and jeopardize the wetlands and the fauna it supports. Homeowners will want to apply fertilizers and pesticides, which will seep into these wetlands. Please don't put unsuspecting homeowners in this challenging situation. Thank you very much for your consideration.
As a few, Ms. Jelly Conges asked, do you have um, any kind of formal evidence of the box turtle in your yard, just out of curiosity?
I saw it, and it was near the base of my Norway maple tree. This was a few years ago. It didn't occur to me to take a picture of it, that I might need it. I had no idea that it's a species of special concern. If you look at the DEEP's website, the eastern box turtle is a species of special concern. And Dr. Clemens also pointed out an area that is suitable for box turtle, and when you look at the photo, there's not big rocks. It's like a little lot, a little gravel. They cannot navigate boulders. If you look at the downstream part of that seap on the western corner, as it goes into one sunrise terrace and into Audrey Welder's, which is thirty three Downs Road, and then it turns into a stream on twenty three and twenty five Downs Road. It's all boulders, and a turtle's not going to be in that area. But that, you know, soft little rocky area, small rocks, that I took a picture of, you know, that's suitable. So somehow, that turtle must be going to and from. Um, I don't know how it got in my yard, but if you understand where I live, I'm surrounded on three sides. So what happens in my property is most likely happening at fifteen sixty four and fifteen thirty six Monroe Turnpike.
Yep.
So I don't have any more evidence than my testimony that I saw one on my property.
Understood.
Yes. Um, oh, one more thing. Um, that map that Mr. Edwards had shown, and he expanded the conservation easement, that last wetland, that stream, it's not a clear representation of what's actually there. I have walked up Monroe Turnpike several times, and I really highly recommend that on your sidewalk that you walk up, Monroe Turnpike, and that last water car, it all of a sudden drops. And when you're on the road, it's it's like on the curb, one, I need to talk into this and show you visually too. Curve, road, you know, the road's curve. One more foot, it's a big drop, and but it goes, I don't know, ten, fifteen feet, maybe, you were there, right, Lee? How many feet you think that went? You know, anyways, but you should look at it. And so it's a big drop, a type of drop that if you fell into that, you would seriously injure yourself. And the town has an additional culvert down there. So it's not just on the map where it meets the road. It actually comes to the road, it has this big gash in the earth, and then there's a culvert deep in that gash. Is that understood? Do you understand?
I understand your description. I'm not sure the point you're trying to make about it, though.
Well, they were talking about, my point is, it shouldn't be in the conservation, because they were talking about, well, the public can enter here. The public shouldn't enter there. It's dangerous.
I think, I I appreciate that. I think that we we kind of reached that conclusion.
So I want to just add testimony of what I have observed, and I've walked up there several times. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Anybody else in the chambers who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Mark Lamont, fifty one Downs Road. My remarks have changed.
Sign the sheet. You can do it after.
Okay. My comments have changed quite a bit as a result of the discussion, seeing a lot of good things came about. But these are called public hearings, and I just want to start off by saying, not one member, not a finger participated at all, except for the last one, I was on the road. But to my recollection, not one member of the public has spoken out in favor of this development. In fact, in no shape or form, everybody that's from the public sector has said, please don't allow this development. Just wanted to go on record, having said that. It's it's nice that we have this twelve acres of what's being called open space. I'm still unclear as to what that is too, but I guess it means it's protected. It was very good to see this evening that somebody came forward with a conservation easement proposal of ten acres. I love what Dr. Clemens said, it's not enough, it's not big enough, we need a bigger buffer. And kind of where I'm going with all that is, I think we're all missing a simple truth. And I think Dr. Clemens is trying to be diplomatic, and so I'll say what I thought I heard him say, or interpret, I thought I heard him saying, was that this thirty plus acre piece of property is a is an ecosystem. Starts off with the with the twelve acres of open space easement. That's a series of cliffs, boulders, and steep terrain. What happens with the water, the water feeds and percolates down through that steep terrain. It feeds the wetlands and the seepage basins. So then you have cliffs, the seepage basins and the wetlands, and the third part is the drainage area. That's a key part of the whole ecosystem of this piece of property. So the whole property is an ecosystem. I don't think you can, my opinion, and what I've seen, and what I saw during the thousand year rain event recently, I don't think you can stick eight houses on on now ten acres of property without denuding the landscape and changing that ecosystem dramatically, and changing what's going to run off of that. I don't think there's any box culvert anywhere that will hold back rain like we saw the other day, of course, but I don't even think it'll hold back a regular thunderstorm. But anyway, I I just think, uh, I look at this thirty plus acre property as an ecosystem in and of itself. It is a wildlife habitat. It is an offer for, just think it should be left alone, let it stand as is, and let the public enjoy it. Conservation easement of the whole property, and put healthy trails back in there. It can annex the Web Mountain and Web Mountain Discovery Zone. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Lamont, could I ask you, so you, uh, just specific to the the corner in the back, in some of the maps that we saw today, where it stated open space, not not the not the easement, right? You you, that is a a space that you think that the public, the surrounding community does benefit from and would want to maintain access to?
I don't know. I don't know that anybody benefits. I mean, I'm not going to say what I said previously, but I don't believe there's much access on it at all. Apparently, as I understand it now, there's no trespassing. So I don't know who's accessing it at this point in time.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't mean to put you on with the with that. That's not, that's not my intention. My intention is sort so.
Yes, again, yeah, based on, and I just have to say this based on the past.
based on the past experiences, this is private property. It's somebody's private property. It's not open space. Nobody from the public should be accessing it.
100%. And that wasn't the intention. I didn't mean to put you on this. It's just the curiosity is, does the surrounding community view that?
Having said that, sure, we, it's right there. I mean, I go through our neighbor's property. I can access that property anytime. There's no fences or anything. I don't even know if there are bona fide trails on it now. But they could be developed. And it would be a great area for families and kids and their house just to go back there and walk with their dogs and just take walks. So would I access it if it were available to me that way? You bet. I think the whole neighborhood as well.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the chambers?
My name's Michelle Saltes. I could live at 237 Raffelon.
237 Cottage Street.
Cottage Street. Thank you. It's been a really long day.
You got your letter.
Wow. So a couple of things. I'm a bit distressed. I haven't been able to come to prayer meetings, which is why I've sent the emails in the past. I have been on surgery through the last year. It's a little frustrating that we're all up here spending a crazy amount of time, hours, effort, as the gentleman before you said. And you know, it seems to have been in favor of this yet, unlike culvert repairs and things of the previous discussion. We literally have Ms. Jelli get up here and say, I wanted to address attorney versus comment of such and such as he sits here on his phone going like this and never paying attention. We all sat and paid attention and listened.
Hold on, everybody address the commission, please. Don't have conversations with each other.
We've all tried to make crazy notes. I have the same issues with the fact that the salamanders the doctor brought up. There is a DEEP site. I will send you guys the link to it. It specifically mentions the duskeys you mentioned. It specifically mentions other places in the U.S. that have done various culverts and the sediment within them and the issues with specifically salamanders trying to go back up using plants. It's different, like he was saying earlier, the natural environment where you do have some pools and some break rocks. It's not a straight shot, like when we do these concrete ones. Property eight, to me on the map, looks as if it goes right against the wetland, the back right side of the property that my map was positioned. If that's so, we know here, we have lots of leaves. We have everything. People are just going to blow more leaves in it like they do in some other areas. It is going to potentially fill up that side of the wetlands, which is a concern to me. Salamanders are not 100% aquatic. They don't like, they don't live in the water. So unlike the questions and statements, they do rely on those surrounding areas. They've got our street on Cottage 111. They've got downs. There's a very defined area they have. We're going to take out all the trees. It's, there's also another site, unfortunately, I found that. I'll refer it to everybody. That states once we start losing this tree cover and the ground heats and they have more sun, things like the salamanders that rely on the shade and on being damp, we'll have a harder time in stroke. That's going to potentially happen. I've got a couple of salamanders on the property. I could send you those. It just, the trails, if we try to take apart for those eight properties, leave some wetlands and then make this other open space for specific access to humans that we don't grant right now, we're taking away even more of the habitat. It sounds like a great plan. We have enough space. We have cars, we have blocks, we have bikes, we can go anywhere. The creatures that live in this very defined area have this area only unless they're crossing the roads. That's it. It bothers me that we've gone from two houses at some point to four, to eight, to whatever, and we're worried about somebody's money and we're anything else. It's somebody wanting to develop it. It is its own ecosystem there. If there's other places people can build, these animals live here. That's it. They can't move. We're not going to relocate them. We have some degree of responsibility. Connecticut, in the last two years, in 2024, Connecticut was given $2 million to plant new trees because we've done so poorly over the years, either losing them or taking them down to build. The year before that, it was $15 million in 2023 that we got out of like a $1 billion federal grant. That's a lot of money. And it went to towns like Stratford and Norwalk and the only one, or Stamford and Norwalk, the only ones I remember specifically offhand. It's because they would build, and they used to be very rural like us. You take things down, you build more stuff. Now, all of a sudden, you can't support things. You get an erosion of sun or shade. Now we're trying to put the trees back. We're already in a good place here. And we're focusing on, I think the wrong thing here. We're not focusing on what's there. I understand they're having issues where one department says, yes, okay, we want this. They do that and they get a note from the southern department. We're not required to say yes. We're not required to give them what they want. You guys are here because we trust you to do what we need done and to listen, which thankfully all are. So I will send you whatever information I could find for you. And I really, really hope you guys do take into consideration. None of us are in favor of this. And the only one that's going to benefit is somebody financially. There is no one who's going to benefit otherwise. Thank you.
Anybody else in the chambers?
Good evening. My name is Samantha Thieret. I live at 5 Sunrise Terrace in Monroe. I had a bunch of notes all written out for you. And I'm just throwing caution to the wind here because a lot of it, I think, as we've discovered tonight, a lot of the concerns of the residents, I guess, apply to planning and zoning. It is very, just from a layperson, it's very confusing. When I, one of the first meetings I came to, we, I was told, well, the, you know, the audience was told, we don't want to hear about your wells and we don't want to hear about the wildlife, to which I say, everything is related. My husband and I moved here in 2016 to Monroe, specifically to this area of Stevenson because of how special a place it is. And when we, I think a lot of people, like we heard tonight, we've heard many times, well, it's a wetland area, so you can't build on it. We were told by our realtor, and this is on her, not anyone else, no one can build behind your home because it's a wetlands area. So I think we need to educate the people of the town or whoever better about just what can and cannot be done on wetlands because it's very confusing. Sometimes this is planning and zoning. Sometimes this is wetlands. So a lot of what I was going to say tonight, I think, is planning and zoning. So if it gets approved, I'll be at the planning and zoning meetings with my information then. I do just want to say, I just want to reiterate that it is a special part of Monroe. It is very different to the more built-up part of town. That is not to say the town isn't lovely in certain areas and it's great in our area. We were also very heavily hit by the storms. And I know that this also may be a planning issue. But removing the trees, and I'm not sure where trees fall, whether it's planning or whether it's planning and zoning or whether it's wetlands, removing the trees is going to do nothing but hurt our area when we do have more flooding. And it won't be 1,000 years, let's just be honest. It won't be 1,000 years before we have a storm like that. But I just want to end by saying, thank you for your time. You know, it's after 10 o'clock. I haven't had dinner and, you know, this isn't fun. I just want to say like, it's not fun as a member of the public to be stressed out about what's happening in your town. It's not fun. I don't enjoy coming to the meetings. You know, I do enjoy listening and I am very thankful that you give us this opportunity to come and speak. It's not, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. But it's hard. It's hard. It's intimidating. I don't know about culverts. I don't know about these rocks and those rocks. And that's why we have people like Dr. Clemmons to guide us. And while he did make the, you know, the point has been made that these developers have done a really good job in making things more friendly. At the end of the day, it's not a great idea. It's just not a good idea to build there. I don't understand why we're even entertaining the thought of putting a road over a wetlands. I really, I don't, I don't get it. And why, and, and okay, so a bridge was mentioned, but then it's planning and zoning saying, well, you can't have a bridge there? I mean, it just seems crazy. There's so many places to build in Monroe. Why would you tear up this important section of town? And I don't envy you having to hear all of this information all the time and have people from the public yelling at you and telling you that you're elected officials and you're, you know, beholden to us. So thank you again for all of your time. And I really hope you take into account all that the public has said. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just for the record again, we are not elected officials.
I know. And I was saying, I know you're not elected officials. I just meant like you were getting abuse.
Is there anybody else in the chambers who would like to come up and speak? Anybody online who would like to speak? Anyone online?
Yes, I'm online and I'd like to speak.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Peggy Kelly, 38 Downs Road. I've lived there for over 15 years. I like the section of Monroe I live in. I like the Stevenson section. I don't want it to turn in to where we have no more wetlands. That is very important for the whole ecosystem up there, our wells, everything. And I don't understand why we keep going round and round with things. You're given, everybody's given information, but it seems like our, we're like ignored. I just feel like we're ignored. If we need something in our end of town, we're ignored. We're ignored when we're stating, we don't want this. It's not good. It's not good for the environment. It's not good for any of us. We're ignored. And I don't like that feeling anymore that this town is giving me. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else online who'd like to?
And who was that that just spoke?
She just gave her first name.
Peggy Kelly.
Kelly with the E Y at the end.
Yes.
Downs Road, but I'm not sure where.
38.
38.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else online who would like to speak? Anyone going once? Okay, I guess that's it. We will continue this to our, was it the ninth?
October 9th.
October 9th meeting, right?
Motion.
We will approve. Yeah.
Okay. Motion to continue us to the next October 9th meeting?
I motion to continue this public hearing to the next meeting on October 9th.
Motion by Commissioner Kelly.
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Sabia. All in favor?
Aye.
To unanimous? All right. We can.
Go fund me to provide this piece of property?
We, let's take just a quick second so that everybody gets geared.
So I was gonna say, we will go on to deliberate, I guess, on Todd Drive. But we'll get that cleared up. Don't think it's going to take great.
I don't know what's going to happen. People could buy one, but half of those things I tried to talk to.
Yeah, I was, ah, this is correct.
All right, so I guess we are now deliberating on IWC 2024-7, 1488, Todd Drive. Do we need to discuss this or do we want to go right through a motion?
I mean, I don't, I don't have concern. I don't like it's something that's necessary. And there's some urgency behind it.
Right. It's not, it's, it's clearly in favor.
Yeah.
Again, this is, this is the chance for us all to discuss, so chime in.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, good.
Yeah, no question.
Me too.
I'm almost.
No questions. What kind of culvert are they put?
Nothing good. I'll make a motion.
Just stop.
Can I make a motion that we accept this and have it go ahead and all do speed? What's the official words?
You have to give.
Motion to approve.
For reasons, like we have to just make sure it's, there wasn't a ton of discussion. So there's not like a ton of like, like the relevant factors of why you think there will, like, are you approving it because you think there'll be no adverse environmental impact on the wetlands and watercourses because it's the replacement of an already existing structure?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Take it. No, you're right. I, it is a replacement. I don't think it's going to be too difficult. But three months is a long time and I feel bad for the four residents that are involved. But, you know, it's for their best. It sounds also like it's an improvement. Right, there you go.
They're diverting it, they're having a bypass. So, you know, I think it's a better spot once it's completed.
Right.
Yep.
Somebody please make a motion.
I make a motion to approve. And whatever else I have to say, based on the fact that it's, the environmental consider, environmental impact is minimal compared to the benefit to the neighbors. And I feel as though it's something that we have to do here in Monroe to maintain.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Fernandez. It's all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
Is it too late to make a change? Yeah. Okay, because in, under enforcement, we have Bill Loricella, who's been waiting. And I could go through all of this afterwards. Could we jump to that?
You want, okay. Do we need to make a motion?
Do we have to make a motion on that?
Do you need the agenda?
We change, can, I can't make a motion. Does that have to make a motion?
All right. We'll go forwards and backwards.
Okay, just as a background.
Both in section F, right? We're in section F.
Yeah, we're in section F, so that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so you have this in your packets. Bill came in for an application to put an addition on the house. It looked like it was in the upland review area by quite a bit. I went out to take a look at it. There's a pretty good violation and he's here to address the violation before we can go ahead with an application.
Which location is this?
This is 116 Grist Mill Road. That happens sometimes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Morris Solomon, 116 Grist Mill. Yes, we have a package that I took together. We, I had a survey done by Cheryl. This is like on the phone. And he overlaid a GIS map, like I think it is Monroe GIS map over it, which it showed what Andrew said. The addition was, you know, well within the 100 foot, which I didn't know about the 100 foot rule. Well within it. I have a map from when I bought the lot. It was also House 1997. Now, I have a map from when I bought the lot, the old house in 1997, and there's no wetlands on my property on this map until you get back where the conservation is meant. My property is much different than what a map that was done that overlaid the GIS. And so, and then of course Andrew came out and he saw that we had removed some trees, which are definitely within what I now know is called the upland review area. By the way, nobody knows what that term means. And I've talked to 100 people in town. Only one guy, Latioma, who was a developer, knew what that term meant. People don't know it. Definitely have to find a way to get it out. This map was very clear about what the easement area is marked on. There's no marking on it. I don't even know if the term existed in 1997, upland review area. I'm trying to find it, you know, in the statutes and stuff, but, but there's no marking on it. A regular homeowner has no idea. So we have a wooded area on the left side on our property bordered by town land, which is where the wetlands are, in town land. And there were, excuse me, numerous large ash trees and, and smoke trees in there, and some beech trees in there. The ash trees, all as we know, they're out and they died, and then they start falling, right? And I had a small set of trees, fruit trees, so I liked them to grow things, on the property. Took out about eight of those on the property. They were not within the 100 foot upland review area, as I know it today. But they were threatening a garage that I built in 2014. They were threatening a shed on the back part of the property. And since it was on dry land, on in wetlands, and I didn't know anything about the upland review rules and stuff, we started taking them down about four or five years ago. A couple of them clipped a few large oak trees, which took the balance off of those trees instead of having a leader going this way and a leader going this way, my house being over here and stuff. It took this leader off. So now I've got trees that are just leaning towards, you know, my structures and things. So we took them down. And at the time we did it, it said we have to do something to the property. It's just got stumps sitting on it and stuff. And so I made the decision I wanted to put in a fruit por, tree orchard there. And that's been on the drawing board for two or three years at this point in time. And so we started excavating before we actually applied for the addition. We started excavate stumps out of there. We moved some dirt, no doubt about it. We didn't, I put the silt fence up because I knew there were wetlands down there. We haven't moved any dirt into the wetlands. We did pile some brush and some logs there. I thought they were right on our property line. They're partially on our property and they're probably four or five feet onto town's property also there. So Andrew came out and he looked at it and he said, you know, you have a violation. Actually, I violated a rule I didn't know existed, and most people don't know exists today and stuff. So we had a soil scientist come out and flag the wetlands on the whole property, not just the part, the area where we're looking to, to do an addition. My 1997 map was accurate as to where the wetlands were. The GIS map was off by 40 feet, not in my favor, of course. And so Sheldon came out after the wetlands were flagged and remeasured to a new map now. And I think only the Coltech units now, maybe the new septic tank also touching the 100 foot area.
Yes, but they are far enough away from, they're, they're just inside the upland review area.
Yeah. So, you know, you have to violate something, yes. Unknowingly is unknowing, certainly. You can look back at history on my property. I put a garage barred on in 2014, got a permit, 2000 per full land, got a permit and stuff. I'm not a guy looking to state rules or anything like that on it. I didn't know about it. And what I did was move it up to it at the end of the day, which I'm going to move back as soon as I get the stumps out. I've got one big stump left there. I gave you a map where I drew in pink the area that we intend to put orchard in. Did some research, see where orchard is within the definition of farming in the state of Connecticut. And a growth test that any agricultural have, with emphasis on farming, maintaining farming. So, you know, my requests are, you tell me what you want me to do. Hopefully it's consistent with my putting in an orchard there. And I'm now three months behind on getting my foundation dug for my addition, and I'd really like to get it dug and get a roof on it before the snow comes in the wintertime.
I've been out to the, to the site, so if the commissioners have any questions, site related.
Can you, can you tell us what we're seeing?
Yeah. So that, show me the picture you're looking at. Okay.
I always got the, I.
Okay.
Silk fence.
So to the right of that picture, you're seeing up the hill, essentially what you're looking at is the whole pink area that he has drawn in on the map looking down. So.
Where are we on this?
You are right where your thumb is.
Your thumb.
Right where your thumb is looking up that way. Yeah. Yeah. Oh wait, no, I'm sorry. Nope, vice versa.
You're the.
Yep. Up there, looking down.
The shed, the shed. That makes sense. Okay.
All right. So on the left side, it goes down to a stream, okay, where, so Bill did put up that silt fence before ju, just knowing that the stream was down there. So he did put the silt fence up. He put it up backwards, but.
Didn't come with. Didn't come.
Uh, that road, you know, that, that road has been cut in there and, and the stumps that we're talking about are to the right up the hill.
Yep.
So to the right up the hill is where he's suggesting putting in an apple orchard, which is well within the, the upland review area.
So Andrew, did you refer to a road?
Uh, yeah.
The path you talked about?
Well, yeah.
That's the old horse trail. This was 30 acres of horse property.
Uh huh.
It got something divided in 97. That was the horse trail, and it followed alongside that creek. I hesitate to call it river. That creek all the way down till it drops off and goes down to the train tracks that used to feed Stephenson lumber. So.
What, what's this on?
Okay. So going down that way is where.
Wonder what this debris is on.
Oh, okay.
That is branches and logs and stuff from some of the trees that we cut down, that we thought we were putting right on the edge of our property line.
Okay.
There are somewhat on our property line because the silt fence is inside of our property line, and there's somewhat on the town. They're not in the wetlands themselves.
I got you.
They're in the upland review.
We're going to remove that.
And as you go through those, those pictures, you'll see more and more debris that's there from Belgian block to containers.
All that, the plan is to remove all that.
Anything that is unnatural or foreign, I think is a term that you use, we're definitely going to take out. And there's, there's, my son's a big firewood nut. We burn five cords a year easy. So he had wood pallets, he was tacking them on and stuff. I pulled almost all those out by hand at this point, and we took them to the, the transfer station and stuff. So, yeah, they replaced my front walk and they took some of the flagstone and put it down there. And as you know, they, they disposed it down there. So that's all going to come out. But the picture you pointed at with all that debris or whatever you want to call it there, I gotta tell you, I mean, I got an excavator, I can go in there and I can yank all that stuff out. I can tell you, I think that's more damaging to what's there. That stuff's piled up there for anywhere from five to, from two to seven years probably at this point. I think it provides.
Which is branch.
Barrier.
Branches are, are one thing, but like I'm looking at like this picture.
The plastic.
Got pallets.
The plastic.
The OTC toques there.
Right.
I've already picked them up my hand.
Yeah. That kind of stuff that.
Pallets are almost all gone at this point also.
Right. And what, what's your thought on the apple orchard, those types of trees as it relates to, you know?
Can I interject for one second? Can you, do you want to take a stab at talking about what the ask is here, why this is not a permitted use as of right and, and what really the commission is looking at?
I think it's permitted use as of right. Plus you have to have the permission first.
It's not.
It's, right, it's not. If you weren't a farm before by your, as of right, you're asking to take up more land to continue or to add more to your farm.
First, so let's take one big step back. So the permitted use as a right permits and inland wetland regulations are for within wetlands and watercourses. So because this isn't actually within a wetland and watercourse, he doesn't have to ask for the commission to make a determination for a permitted use as of right. Because he's in the upland review area, this is truly just a violation of remediation. And then he's also asking to put in an orchard, which may also be, depending on what remediation you require of him, then maybe it's just an agent approval application afterwards. So I think the question is, is part of the remediation, an orchard, an acceptable mitigation strategy?
I was asking, like, these types of trees, are they considered, you know, friendly to the neighborhood?
They are, they are friendly for wildlife. Okay. They are a food source. They're not necessarily native trees.
Right.
They're, they're certainly not native wetland trees, but we're not talking about wetlands, we're talking about upland review area. I, I don't think it's inappropriate. I think that it's, you know, as far as, you know, benefit, it, it.
Right.
It's a lot more beneficial than lawn.
Right.
You know, which is what it was.
I would ask this commission to look at that, this though, if somebody came in, into, so they're within 25 feet of a wetland, yes, based on the new.
Based on the new, yeah, the closest is, it, it, it varies, but yes.
So independently, if they were to come to you and ask to clear these trees in order to put in an orchard, so let's assume this was asking for permission, not asking for forgiveness, you know, my question to this commission would be, what would your view of that, you know, be?
Can I ask specifically, Mr. Loricella, what kind of trees are these? What, what, what?
Apple, peach, pear, cherry.
And what is your intention to do with the fruit?
So, so I grew up next to my grandfather's house, and he was from your little country, and he had all of these fruit trees. And as I walked home from school at the right time of the year, I could reach up in a tree and I could take a piece of fruit. I would like my grandkids to be able to do that. I would like kids in the neighborhood to be able to do that. My wife cans, jars, does all of that stuff, right? So it'll be far more than we could ever use. So they'll go to soup kitchens and to the pantry and stuff like that. From it, I bought a press to make cider. From it, just arrived yesterday and stuff. So this isn't a little endeavor. This is, this is what I want to do in retirement.
That's great. You put in a cart before the horse, buy in a press.
Didn't cross that line.
But, what, so you're going to use, what kind of pesticides and herbicides and other?
Everything we do is organic. We have a, an, an organic garden today, including we brought in organic soil to put in it. So it'll be all organic, there'll be no non-natural pesticides or anything else.
So I, I can't predict, but if, I would be much more inclined to favor fruit trees if, if the owner was to promise not to use pesticides that were inorganic.
You got my word.
Just, just, just a point. That could be, that could be a condition of.
Yep. Yep. To, to your question, Kathleen, these trees that were taken out, if we're rewinding the clock here, they were, they were primarily dead ash and then other trees were compromised as irritable. So I, I think obviously we would want to look at that, you know, that situation, but also my next door neighbor was almost killed by an ash tree two years ago, legitimately almost killed. And so I think the removal of that ash tree is, is something that should be done in an expeditious way when.
They're most, they're down.
Yeah, well, that, I know, but if we're rewinding this conversation, if we're rewinding the conversation and saying, would we approve that kind of thing?
There's nothing like sitting in your family room at eight o'clock at night and, and it feels like somebody was blasting next door because, you know, one of these 100 footers just fell.
Right, right. Yeah.
We're all familiar with that.
Yeah. Happy ending, the guy survived and his fantasy football team is now dead ash.
Okay, well, that's very important, our ruling.
But to, to, so to that original question, I believe that I probably would have been in support of removal of those trees if this were not a conversation about something that had already been done. So I don't have objection to the clearing aspect.
I have a suggestion. As far as the clearing goes, yeah, if, if you feel like that's appropriate and, and the fruit trees go in there, the other issue is the disturbance that happened to the left, which is beyond the, the, the silt fence over there. So now some material, foreign material has come out. So there's disturbance there, there's, there's bare soil there. I have a suggestion that would be great for both of you. Blueberries are a native plant.
We have, we've had blueberries where the ash tree fell.
And blueberries along that line would go right along with your canning and your, your, and it's a native plant. It's a food source. And I think that now you're getting the native plants that, that you want, building up on the ecosystem, and you're still getting something that's desirable.
Every, every piece of that foreign material that I took out, I took out by hand, right? I mean, I just walked. So all I did was, I disturbed some leaves. You know, there wasn't much vegetation in this area because the tree cover, canopies were so dense, it was basically leaves sitting in there, you know?
And then it would be up to the commission whether, whether it's more beneficial to leave the branches that are there. And you could look further through those pictures. There's, there's.
If they're just branches.
They're the top three trees that have fallen. And I think pulling them out, I think pulling them out is going to be, you know, it's going to tear up.
Yeah. Exactly. It's, it's all these Belgian blocks and pallets. That's, that's the kind of stuff that, yeah, we don't want.
Right. Coming out, and it's coming out by hand.
Yeah, and that's perfect. That's the way to do it. You get a handmade, a couple wheelbarrows or something and just wheel it out. So I think that, that's fine.
You don't, you don't get extra points per, by hand, because you should have known better than to put it there first. Regardless of up or the review area, not.
Well, if it, if there was no upland review area rule, then those being there wouldn't be wrong.
But I, I mean, you, you know certain things about inland wetlands, but you don't know other things. So I, I, and the border of your property, whether you knew it or not, I don't.
Well, it's on my property.
Yeah. Putting it into somebody else's property, whether it's town property or not.
That's.
If you're going to do that, you really have to be careful. You have to be very careful.
Yes, yes.
All right. So what are we proposing at this point? Agent approval?
Agent approval on the addition to his house. And as far as the remediation goes, I mean, this is not really a remediation plan. It's just showing, can the remediation plan be worked out between myself and the?
I, I think so.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Redo the issue plan.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be through the commission. I think it's fine when you handle it.
Right. I, I would give you the, the ability to do it.
Yep.
If I can make a motion, or you want to do that? Are we ready for that?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
It's in, under enforcement, I don't know.
Yeah.
Let's make a motion.
You want to do it just to?
All right. I make a motion that our inland wetlands enforcement officer takes, takes the lead on this and makes a decision, makes decisions as needed on, without conferring back with us regarding this property and with no cut on the blueberry proportions or anything like that. No.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Fernandez. All in favor?
Aye. I would, I would be interested to see what the end result is, just if you could hear what it is.
Well, I will.
And then thank you for coming in front of us and thank you.
Thank you for waiting. People don't know what the rules are and I don't know how you get people to know what the rules are. When I talk to people about the football, it's your name and you pay for it. It's dry, not wetland. You're supposed to know that there's a rule out there or you're supposed to hire an attorney and pay him to go through the rule there. Other stuff. So again, I'm sure we did a mailing to everybody that has wetlands adjacent to their property. It costs $10,000 stamps and stuff. Do you think there's a way that, you know, we want to attack the wetlands, which trust me, I do. Uh, and stuff, there has to be a way to get the word out so that people know this because I'm telling you, I talk to people that are like, I did this or I did that and stuff. Not because they're bad people, they just didn't know.
We deal with it.
Yeah, you only, I'm not the first, right?
It's a great idea, Mr. Lawrence. In fact, we do have public outreach on our, on our agenda here to talk about because we do want to get closer to them.
I think it's a good idea. People are not, look, it never occurred to me that I should go walk to see if there's something. You know, I'm pretty much his type of a guy, so I think it's, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience. Okay. So let's, you know, finish with enforcement and then we'll go back up to all the rest of the agents.
Surely. And the rest of this really is, is pretty quick, guys. Under enforcement, 60 East Village Road, just bringing it to your attention, um, we've had previous, uh, violations that have been addressed and fixed. There's one more violation at 60 East Village Road that I issued a notice of violation and requested his presence at the next meeting of October 9th.
Have you actually spoken in? Have you got confirmation he's coming?
No, I have not. And he made, he's, he's welcome. He's, he's been told to come. Okay. And then going to agent approvals. Uh, IAA 2024 14 and 15 are really part of the same project. Uh, this is the road that driveway that had been washed out.
Ask it.
I've been out there, uh, a half dozen times. They've got their driveway fixed on the lower half of the driveway. That is all fixed up. Looks great.
Like back in the house?
What's that? No, no. There's still a section of the driveway that they're still working on. Um, and they still have to get power in there and they can't get power in there.
They fixed it.
So they're working on it diligently, but it was a big fix.
Oh, no, I know. Hoping they're.
Yeah, no, they're, they're not.
Well, they're making progress.
They're making a lot of progress, but yeah, they've got a little ways to go. Uh, J Lane, uh, is IAA 2024 16. Um, I issued an agent approval on that. There were two large pine trees. They were planted, uh, they were in a wetland. They were, they were five feet away from, uh, from an active stream. Okay. But they were, one was 60 feet, one was about 40 feet, pine trees, top heavy and leaning toward the house. And she wanted to remove them. I figured I could do an IAA on that and gave them go ahead to do that. It was a safety concern. Uh, IAA 2024 17, we're just kind of.
And that's not granted yet, but it's in the process.
I'm in the process of this. This just happened the other day. Um, it's another storm related washout of the person's front yard and completely undermining, uh, completely undermining the footings of her deck to the point where the, the, the building inspector was out there and condemned the house. Or condemned the deck, condemned the deck.
Okay.
Uh, so the ask is to restore that front yard, but in doing that, uh, right at the water's edge, they're, uh, they're going to need to do something to stabilize that slope. And what is being suggested is large rip rap, almost like a wall, but not a wall, a more natural, uh,
Stone embankment.
A stone embankment, starting with larger stone, moving to smaller. And again, uh, asking you to, if it's okay to do an agent approval on that because it is storm related and it's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great.
And, and that is, that was pretty extreme. If you see the pictures of it, it's they, their entire embankment just got washed away. They're right next to the floodway. They're like on the outlet of floodway to Lake Zor and, and they got.
Not there anymore.
Probably a hundred, a hundred and forty feet long by probably 40 feet.
Jeez.
Yeah.
Um, they also, their marker was, um, for sale and now it's no.
Oh, right. Yes. Yeah. All right. So that's all I have.
All right.
All right.
We're down to, uh, looks like general discussion minutes.
You have the meeting minutes for eight, 28, 24. Uh, special meeting, which was when we, um, we voted on chairs for the regular meeting that happened subsequent to that. Um, we, yeah, I believe Ben had looked at them, but we didn't circulate hard copies of it, which is why we didn't vote at the last meeting. And then the nine, 11, 24 meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Um, yeah, I took a look at them. Um, I didn't see any big issues. I did, I did mention a couple of things to, to Carrie and she was able to, to, to fix them on the regular for August 28th, but I am, I have to file a motion to.
Motion to approve.
To approve them.
Yep.
For each one?
Each one. Yes, one. Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, you have to say anything or?
Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, accept those, the minutes for the special meeting on August 28th, 2024.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
I am the second.
Okay.
One. Next.
Well, I guess we need to vote. Yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Next.
Uh, next. All right. I'll, uh, do another motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of August 28th, 2024.
Do a second.
I'll second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
And then I was able to go through this when I received it, like looked, took a look at it. So I will also do a motion to approve the minutes September 11th, 2024 for the regular.
Do we have a second?
Get stained from this. I thought it was not here.
Somebody else. I'm sure Frank can have a second. All favor? All right.
Stained.
We're, we're being careful like Ryan, not to say that we approve it if we haven't worn here, right?
Did I get enough stain?
I did. Had the pleasure of watching the video though. Now.
You had trouble.
Stop, stop.
Yeah, it's simple.
Yeah. That's, you got trouble drinking. All right. Right. I didn't think that. Still. All right. Um, meeting schedule, 2025.
Been given a copy of the schedule for next year. Um.
This is the schedule. Oh, look, it says six thirty. Nice. You guys okay with that? I'm going to be out of here at, at 10 o'clock instead of 10:30.
Uh, so we will have to update the regulations. We can, we can do that in, um, November at some point. I assume that will happen just at one meeting, but we did change the time. So it's reflective of, uh, the change. Uh, Carrie tried to give like a little information if it was surrounding, um, a holiday. So, uh, just to, you know, give people a little bit of an idea of what's going on. Do you think if there was any conflicts? Uh, you guys actually aren't as bad because your Wednesday, you're right in the middle of the week. Um.
Do I have to sign this or do we have to make them?
I have to. You have to approve it. You have to make a, a motion and approve it.
Okay.
I motion to approve the 2025 regular meeting schedule.
Oh, second it.
We have a second by, I'm sure it's, all right.
All second?
All favor?
Aye.
All right. That's it. All right. Yeah. He could have a, an original.
Don't lose it.
No stamp.
For the.
Original one.
For the record.
Uh, no public outreach updates, I assume?
No, I mean, we gotta talk about. Uh, yeah, I, I, yeah, uh, let's do public outreach though. Um, yeah. I mean, we gotta talk about, I guess the question is just, you know, Keith was the one that was really kind of spearheading the planting.
Is that the topic that we want to focus on just with the commentary tonight?
That's a great question. Um, so, you know, we're happy to hear from the commission of, you know, do you, do you want Andrew to think about a public, you know, outreach?
I actually like the suggestion of letting the public know a little bit more of the do's and don'ts because.
And what we do.
Well, and what we do, yeah. And what we can do.
Right. That's the big one.
You know, because.
Bill is also on, I see, you know, Zoom. If there's any suggestions or appetite to maybe do something with the Monroe Sun. Um, that's a potential option. If you guys think that would be a thing.
Depending on the focus. I think our town needs a little civics lesson. And I almost want to have a non, uh, non-party explanation of how town, town governments work or, you know, just, you know, I, there's so much.
Bill did do something with the planning and zoning. We had, um, Dr. O'Reilly, Chairman Michael O'Reilly from planning and zoning, myself and, um, Bill Holesworth, the Director of Community and Economic Development, where we did kind of talk about some of that of just like, we are beholden to.
That was just this year, right? That was following the roost or during the turkey roost hearing?
Yeah, I haven't even been here a year yet. So yeah, it's been within the last year.
I think an article about us or about the inland wetland, um, role through Bill, if he's willing to do that is great. But I'm just saying that beyond that, you know, instead of, that, that our town really, you know, that, that they don't teach civics in high, in high school. I'm not trying to fix that. But I've talked to our director of our library and numerous people about, you know, people just don't understand how, how the town works or doesn't work. And it would be great to have an open town session. I, I could probably talk to Terry if, but it wouldn't just be us. It would be, these are the commissions. This is what, this is how they link or, you know, I just something to, you know, where people could come in and, and then have questions and they might have questions about, well, you know, I, I noticed that the, the planning and zoning doesn't talk to inland. I, I don't know. They, they could bring up all sorts of stuff, but just, I think that.
That's a, yeah, that's a much bigger thing just inland wetlands. So yeah, if you want to approach, um, the first selectman about that.
I can, I'll talk to Terry next time, next chance I get. I won't bother with it, but I'm just saying that there's, you know, because do I really want to go if you, if, if we gave a special session on inland wells, unless you're giving out, you know, fresh made hamburgers and, you know, I'm sorry, I got better things to do.
Yeah. When I think about, uh, when we think about outreach, I'm thinking about, you know, there's the Monroe residents group. There's the Monroe, um, parents group. I know that Parks and Rec, um, you know, posts on that to communicate with the public about what's happening with the parks in town. You know, maybe there's an opportunity for us to put a little one page, you know, pamphlet together. And, and I think the goal of it is, uh, come see us. I mean, I really think that's a main goal if we're trying to let residents know that like, hey, if you're within a wetland or a hundred feet of a wetland, you know, whether it's on your property or neighbor property, just please come see us and we're happy to talk to you about it. Because as many people as they claim, you know, don't know, and I, I definitely believe that's true. There's also so many wonderful residents that come in and, and ask us, you know, I want to take a tree and I know it's probably near a wetland, like, you know, what do I need to do? Like that are doing the right thing. We had someone come in the other day that, um, that our mapping shows there were no wetlands. And she's like, no, 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 there are. Like she then provided more information to be like, no, 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 there actually are wetlands on my property. She was trying to.
Was that something different or was that 251?
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to.
You got a slap of violation on them.
There's plenty of people that are trying to, you know, really do, uh, the right thing and, um, are, you know, are aware. So I think it's just leveraging that gap between those that do and those that don't. So.
I know I've talked about, uh, advocating and advertising, you know, like public notices on social media rather than traditional newspapers. And that I know is not an option. I understand. Like, is there anything wrong with us advocating for our agenda and our meeting dates and telling the public to come participate through, through social media?
That's a good question. I do believe, um, there are people in town council that do that, that post from their personal, um, social media page on like town, um, like town residence groups and like Monroe parents just saying like, hey, this is on the town council agenda, you know, please feel free to come out. So I do think that occurs in town. Um.
Do you think people will learn more just by attending meetings? And I, so for example, there was someone attending tonight that spoke, uh, came up and spoke, and I know he had been an attendee online previously. And he, on one of those previous occasions, ranted that he didn't get an opportunity to talk. He had his hand raised for an hour and he doesn't understand why the applicant was able to talk all of that time. Whereas being here, he saw the flow of the meeting and I think it all made more sense. So just that, like, I don't, I don't think you, you, you can't force people to come and learn and maybe that's a start saying come to the meeting, you know, just.
I, I would, I would just be a little mindful that you don't show favoritism or, or like, you know, um, where it looks like, yeah, bias. Thank you. Um, so if, if you're going to do it, I would think that it would have to be.
Every time?
Yes.
Which is, I think.
I can't get lazy is what you're saying.
Which I think is our argument against not doing it is for the same reason that I was reading letters in the public record. And as soon as I stopped, the question was, well, why, why were you doing it before? And you're not doing it now. You know, and it was like, oh, across the board, you know, we decided this and now we're trying to stay consistent. You know, whereas it kind of looks like that I, it kind of looks like I had bias of like, I was doing it. Now I'm not doing it because, yeah.
No, understanding.
One point with regard to the public, I've heard it from numerous people is the way that we identify exhibits. It, you have no idea until you look at it, whether is that a letter or is that, there's no description. It has a big description inland wetland, but it's the same. And then it says exhibit, uh, 17 or whatever, you know, but you don't know what that is. It would be better if we said, you know, gave the, gave the title here. In the title, IWC 2024 dash 08, and then said, and then said, site visit note next to it, or something to describe what it is. You follow? Because right now we have, we have all these exhibits and I don't know if I've seen them or not. And I have to go through and, and you might have slipped one in there sideways. So, but that's all I'm saying is, is if we could use the application number and then just some word, you know, like jelly, if, if Mrs. Mrs. Jelly put in a letter, you know, so that we could identify what it was or jelly letter or something, you know, to tell us. And then because otherwise they have to go through 50 exhibits too. But, uh.
Planning and zoning.
Want to say one thing on, on the public outreach?
That's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll follow through that. We do that for planning and zoning. Um.
It's not something we've ever done with wetlands.
Consistent and we should do it with wetlands.
Thank you.
You'll see it.
Great.
Sorry. No, no, that's all right. Um, I, I think one thing that we should have, and I don't know how we would get it out to people. I don't know. We don't put it in the sun or anything like that, but just something with some buzz words in it, just because like it, like we had two people in here who didn't understand what upland review was. Just something like that. Cause we can, we can say it and we can say the terms that, that we use here, but it still might be confusing to a lot of people. Just kind of something, um, you know, in, in layman's terms almost with, with, with those particular phrases that we throw around here all the time.
Can we add to our website or glossary?
Yeah, I was, I was looking through our website and it's challenging to navigate to get to regulations, all of them. And then once you finally get to them, yeah, it's not easy. I've been on other websites for other towns and there's a lot of really easy point, click, point, click, search.
Our website is generally.
Challenge.
I don't know that we can.
Do we have a webmaster? I'm not your guy.
So.
Webmaster, I'm not your guy.
That's.
Who, who manages the website, the town website? IT?
Yes, technically.
So there are agencies out there that do this for municipalities.
Yeah.
Maybe we should consider that.
Sure plus.
We're not going to.
It's a town level.
Town level issue. We used to have problems on the.
It is, it is challenging, the website. I do agree.
For just to comment that we have agenda, minute meetings, videos and everything else. Could we have a glossary?
Yeah, something like that. Or just a, a quicker link to, right. Yeah. Our regulations and definitions and stuff. Yeah.
You know, maybe if one of the younger. We take that off the test.
All right. So it's all good. All right. Anything else before we?
Uh, we do town council approved a new commissioner. Um, on Monday, he has not been sworn in yet, but the hope is that he'll be sworn in uh, for the next meeting and will be in attendance. His contact information is on an updated contact sheet, but you were all good.
All right. Anything else?
You guys be a full house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We're adjourned.